Excuse me, we're gonna start. This is a regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given to present the provisions of the upper public meetings act. At the time of the board's reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting scheduled for the year. Notice the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, and the Two River Times on February first, twenty-twenty-four. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall, and as remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice has been and is available to the public and is on file with the office of the Braille Club. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts in the audience about the role and authority about the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board is, uh, the board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity, and its limited authority is specifically set forth in borough ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. This clause is judicial in nature, and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations, the borough council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough of Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the borough code enforcement officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the borough's land use laws for denial by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven Ordnances by satisfying certain required standards of proof. Board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always on the applicant to show that here she is entitled to the specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes and requirements, and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone plan. Variances relate to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call, please. Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Sir Ryan.
Here.
Here. Here.
Sir Salah.
Here. 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 Please join us to supply.
I'm going to give you some data of the United States of America to the, uh, which stands one issue under, uh, individual liberty, total score.
I can't remember more packets. So to the extent that the agenda has not been circulated, we have an application for the diakon matter, which we're gonna hear first. We're gonna move to Stixson Sprout second, and if we can get to it, we have the Goodwin matter, which we had thrown. Before we start with the diakon matter, we're gonna start with the pale will matter. I understand we have a special guest.
That was Dave Davis.
Mr. Ray, how are you doing?
For the record, Michael Irene, special board counsel with regard to the pale person matter.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
What do we got?
We've got the resolution that I drafted, circulated to the board for review post Whispering Woods hearing on the pale moment. So it's just a matter of the board reviewing it, helping to know if they have any questions or problems, and if not, we take a motion to adopt it, and I'll be out of your way.
Mr. Shazzy, can you kind of go?
I was not present.
Oh, I also was not present, but Mr. Shazzy and I refuse ourselves. So I, I reviewed the minutes, and I have thrown with the minutes as written. Uh, there's a motion by me and seconded, seconded by Mr. Forte to accept the application as submitted, moving the pool to the new location as indicated on exhibit A two. I don't think we need to go back and, and review those exhibits. I think that if everyone has read through this and approves the, uh, and, and is in approval of the, uh, of the minutes, I think we can vote on the minutes, and we should be fine.
And may I ask for a formal mo- motion also to move the resolution that Mr. Irene mentioned that proves and is infected in the minutes. Uh, is the memorialization of the action the board taking to have a, a motion to move that resolution?
Yes, motion.
Second.
Second? It was the second? Second. Did you get both of those?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Mr. Nixon.
Uh, was he recusing himself?
Yes. Mr. Richway. Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Law.
Yes.
Salah.
Yes. No, Mr. Steve, I know, yes, so he's not participating. Okay? We're good? Resolution's approved. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
My thinking.
Yeah. No. Nothing. Now, we got a minute to die. I'm gonna set down the arm. For that one, yeah, okay. By the right of the flag, Mr. Forte is accusing himself of the icon application. You know, the icon application?
Yeah.
Good evening. John Sardo, because you're out on our right seats left, the last applicant.
All right. Oliver, did you have your stick on this matter? I understand it's been noticed?
Yeah.
Okay. Unless you bring a ball, we witness. Whoever's gonna testify, things are gonna testify, Mike testify, come on now. Thank you. Please raise your hand. While the sir are coming at that point, I give the photo going to two, I'll speak up and agree.
I listen.
My same instructions as when we were last here. Before you start testifying, state your name, spell your name, tell your last name for the record, so that we can tie up who's speaking and who's getting that. Will there be something on the record? Uh, Mr. Sardo. This application is continuation of something that we heard, I believe, in January, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, when we put this matter on to the agenda, it was my understanding that we were coming forward to review perhaps additional discussion on plans or what have you, and I, I know that you finally came in without counsel and didn't have a plan at the first time. Uh, you've seen the room, we have a, uh, site plan application, which is, uh, next on the agenda. We have time. But what I'm understanding us to be doing is continuing from where we started in January. We should pull the board and make sure that we have all the voting members here, and that we've got a clear continuation. But I just want to identify that I, I did not allocate two hours to this matter. If you think you're going to need that kind of time, then we can adjust the agenda and move things around, and we could put you behind, but we've got a lot of people here to see something different, so I just, I don't usually do that. But it was my understanding that we had a, a, a window of things that we need to stop. So I, I don't know what we pick.
I think that's accurate in the direct presentation, certainly, you know, not take that long, although I can't gauge how long the discussion might, that might assume will be, but I don't think within two hours.
Okay, thanks for your stuff. Back to, as, as it's already been stated on the record, this is a continuation of the January hearing. My understanding is that you've made a couple of additional submissions. And as of right now, with regard to documents, I have marked A nine as the letter from Mr. Bruno, dated March twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-two, providing that they are now counsel. We've also marked A ten, the revised plan that was made, uh, from us. Uh, with regard to design and development, dated March sixteenth. Um, we are, so if there are any additional exhibits, we're up to A eleven. In regard to the zoning board, uh, exhibits, we have an additional, um, writing, uh, from Mr. Rizzo, uh, from CME, dated April, it was April third, twenty-twenty-four, updating his materials. So there's additional exhibit from the board in the ZB five. I think we had one objector, objector one, that was the Lewis, the Vendetto, uh, objection impacting materials. Um, I haven't read the record, I just wanted to make sure I'm accurate on this, that back in January, we had a full complement. Everybody that here has heard the portion of this, okay, that's very good. So I think it is.
Small question for you, that the, the objector will be one that, a new submission or something that was?
No, that was something that was presented last time.
Okay.
Uh, I can show you, I have it in the faculty if you'd like. There's photographs from a, uh, and I believe that folks are here this evening. There's photographs at the house to the rear, uh, showing, I believe, as the based upon the sun's declaration and the new roof line, how it was going to impact light, air, into their plan.
Oh, that's okay.
And again, I, I understand you had an opportunity to review the record. I think their comments would be affecting you. Mr. Sardo, if you could do me a favor, please, and just set the stage with regard to the variances that are triggered by the application, and if you could give the board just a high level understanding of what's changed from when we were here last month, with regard to the proposed plans.
Sure. Um, the property is an R five zone. The residence, um, is, exceeds the maximum square footage that's permitted in the zone. Was proposed is three thousand three hundred and seventy square feet, whereas in the zone, twenty-two hundred is the max allowed. Um, it's relevant to this conversation also, the R seventy-five zone, which, which we'll get into more, that maximum on that zone is three thousand twenty square feet. Um, additionally, um, there is side yard, really what I'll call the minimalist side yard setbacks that are existing that are slightly exacerbated. So there's a side yard setback of point one foot, uh, variance, uh, that's exacerbated by this application due to the height in that, in that one foot, uh, point one foot setback.
Point one foot off of the requirement, not off that property.
Right. Thank you, yes, correct. Yeah, that's why I referred to this. Uh, and the same thing with the rear yard is point three off the requirement. Um, again, it's an exacerbation of, of the existing additional footprint. Um, so that is the relief that the applicant see.
Three variants is square footage, side yard, rear attempt.
Uh, correct, and what's changed is the applicant's, um, there's been some plan changes, but as far as variance relief goes, previously, there were over in previous coverage, they reduced that to comply with the R five standards. If we were to apply the R seventy-five standards, though, uh, it's, R, R five is fifty percent coverage. R seven point five is forty-five percent coverage, so that we need to discuss that in a potential, uh, whether if there's relief, or we're gonna bring that into compliance if we're applying R seventy-five.
Thank you.
Um, good enough. Yeah, this is, I believe, I was previously sworn.
Mr. Shazzy, that accepted as an, uh, expert in architecture by the board.
So it's out to size again, last name spelled S H I, S S I A S. Um, if, given Mr. Leader's comments, I'll probably keep this fairly Greek and just quick, high level overview. The goal of the project right now is the second floor has a mattress suite, uh, a legitimate kid bedroom and a bathroom, and there's a room that, for whatever reason, is built over time, creating it to this owner above the existing two car garage, the low ceilings, uh, doesn't appear to be insulated or not adequately. So the goal is with the owners having two kids and one on the way, uh, to have three reasonable kids beds and end up with a four bed, three bath second floor. Uh, some of the square foot issue comes from the fact that it's, it's kind of an imbalanced floor plan, meaning that the first floor has a lot of extra square footage, and that doesn't necessarily help for bedrooms and things like that. Uh, as far as changes, most of it was just metrics. Previously, uh, I had been measuring the existing second floor to knee walls above bonus room, uh, above the garage that would be demoed anyway. And that basically was, I was understating the existing square footage. Before, I had the second floor at eleven forty-three, uh, when it's measured to not the knee wall, but to where the rafters are thirty inches above the floor as per Fairhaven zoning definition, the actual second floor existing goes to twelve ninety-four, so it's about a hundred fifty-three square feet extra. The total square footage existing goes from three oh three one, previously presented, three one eight two. The proposed square footage is all state the same. Um, so the proposed increase in square footage actually decreased from three thirty-nine to one eighty-eight. Um, there was an issue with the ridge line, relatively minor, on the front and rear elevation was shown as equal with the existing ridge, which was a leftover from an original design option. That was brought down and coordinated with the actual proposed bridge, so brought down about eighteen inches. And then there was an issue with the, uh, seven, existing left side elevation, there was a few windows missing. So those got updated. The, uh, significant design change was made based on discussion about the block coverage. As Mr. Sardo, uh, indicated, that we are above lock, uh, the existing lock coverage was over at fifty-six point seven, fifty percent's permitted. So we're proposing to remove a significant portion of the walkways. Uh, we're leaving a little bit where we need for functional use, and there's also a metal to the driveway plant, it's like a brick extension that the homeowners can, uh, live without, so we're proposing to remove those to bring it down fifty percent. Um, that pretty much covers.
In terms of square foot, that's five thousand twenty-nine?
Uh, yes, five thousand twenty-nine, it's five thousand seven oh four existing, we're proposing to bring it down to five oh two.
Uh, Mr. Shazzy, are you reconstructing the, the roof in the area above the garage, or are you building entirely within the existing?
No, there's not enough headroom to make use of it, so the, the idea would be we could scrape down to the floor joists, probably have to reinforce or add new floor joists above the garage, but we would demo down to the ceiling of the garage and build it back up.
So currently, you have a roof line that meets at the, uh, at the exterior wall, and you're gonna be coming up, and, and what will be the new wall constructed on top of that cell plate?
The new height would be, um, it is, I think I had it at about seven at the front, just to bring the scale down a little bit. Uh, on the sides, it goes all the way to the peak, and then there's gable dormers on the front and the back. So I think the new wall height at the front and the back at the low points where this, uh, roof sits down is about seven feet.
Okay, so the walls that you're adding on the second floor are coming up seven feet from where you currently have the roof line meeting the cell plate draft?
Yes.
And the ridge line is coming up from what to what?
Ridge line, I, I don't have the existing measurement on me where the, uh, it's all not from the grade.
I'm, I'm trying to, to, to come to understand exactly what the new box is gonna look like on top of an existing structure. I wanna know the delta between what's there now and what you're proposing to put there. Seven foot walls, I wanna know now, how much taller it is.
So right now, from grade, it's approximately nineteen feet to the ridge. And I would say, even though those walls are about seven feet, the existing rafters probably sit about eight, eight or so inches below, just the way the construction works. So I would say it's like we're shooting up maybe eight feet.
So eight feet on the ridge, eight feet on the ridge, eight feet to the wall, so effectively, it's an eight foot, uh, addition, that, that's your additional mass.
Yeah, it's like you shoot it up.
And so you're putting that across the, the, the two garage bays as we look at it. Uh, what are the other modifications to the house? Is that fortunate? Were there any other changes to their balance downs on the left?
Uh, there were some things, we had to go through the historic commission, there was some detailing that, well, we agreed to on the front, that's why the windows, some things with the, uh, eaves and the returns, those are more minor details. And then in order to help scale down these, the portion above the garage to make it look as less like a two-story, you know, construction as possible, we're proposing a trellis across the top of the, uh, garage doors, and that just helps scale the space between the new windows still above and the garage doors below.
Uh, we talked at the last one, yeah, yeah, they haven't buried. Okay, thanks.
Do you have any other, any other questions for, for architect? Those look like it's, they've none. Um, I'll call a professional planner, Andrew Jano, speaking planning.
Good evening. This is a potential, um, back of the board. Sir, my name is Andrew Janu, three fifteen, Highway thirty-four, Colts Neck, New Jersey. Licensed professional planner, state of New Jersey, testified before this board, currently serving as the planner for the Borough Freehold and the, uh, Borough Paroret. Uh, been accepted as an expert in land use planning, about spirit quarter, state of New Jersey, and twenty-twenty-two was, uh, appointed to the State Board of Professional Planners by government.
Mr. Janu was, uh, approved by this board as an expert in planning a few months ago, are we okay with it?
Yes, thank you.
I just, for background, that you, you weren't here for the last meeting.
I was not.
And, but in the, in the interim, you've, uh, the governor of the site, the application, you know.
Yes, spoken extensively to the architect regarding the nature of the comments from the first application, or the documentation, the CME review, retail letters, both. Uh, issued, back to this, I've also reviewed your ordinance, your master plan, and the correspondence, uh, relative to the new submission.
There. Then, who you might have, uh, just shared your opinion and your analysis to the board?
Certainly, uh, so what I'd like to do is to circulate an aerial photograph with the property delineated.
And that is A eleven.
It's almost approximately win that real second. Uh, so thi- this is, uh, downloaded from Google, it's a twenty-twenty-four copyrighted image. Uh, it's, it's fairly representative of the existing conditions today, um, and this was downloaded and prepared earlier. Well, in terms of a little bit of the unique nature of this lot, uh, this is within the borough's R five zone. The R five zone has a minimum lot area of five thousand square feet. Uh, this lies oversized for the district, containing ten thousand fifty-eight square feet, roughly twice, uh, with requirements. Uh, one of the peculiar qualities of this lot is that it is a sort of an L shape, as you can see in the photograph. Maintains approximately forty-six feet of frontage along the Normandy, um, and then when you go back about eighty feet on the lot, it opens up to almost eighty-six feet. The house is situated behind the essentially stem of the property, um, meaning that the, the, facing this house, the left side of the house is largely screened from view from the street, and people have the improvements on the lot in front of that. Uh, there are trees there, there's a home, there's a garage, uh, so you, from the street, you really don't read the footprint of the house, the way, way it sits. Um, the house is currently, uh, I believe, three thousand three thousand one hundred and eighty-two square feet, and we are proposing, uh, one hundred eighty-eight square foot addition, making the house three thousand, uh, three hundred and seventy feet. The, uh, addition will be over the existing footprint, there'll be no extensions of the home, it will be directly above the garage. A unique feature to, to where this is, uh, selected is that we do have a minor setback, uh, deviation along that garage corner. Um, the garage towards the front is setback seven point one feet from the sideline, it's compliant to the rear, it's setback at six point nine, so there's a point one foot deviation in the side yard setback. The height of the addition will be within the, uh, massing that's permitted within the R five district, and will be under thirty feet. Uh, so with respect to the side yard, the neighbors will have an envelope that's consistent with the expectations within the R five district. Similarly, the rear yard setback to the addition is twenty-nine point one, where thirty is required, so less than a foot deviation of what should be there. Again, that's the minimus, uh, uh, I would argue, at such a scale, it wouldn't be noticeable to, to a neighbor. And again, we are consistent with what the height standards would be within the R five district, so again, the neighbors, uh, both to the rear and to the side, are generally getting something that's within expectations for light air and open space within the R five district in terms of where massing would be situated and at what scale the massing would be situated. And that's independent of the home overall, in that, you know, where, where we're doing the addition and where we're impacting the neighbors. Uh, the variance we are seeking this evening is for an increase in the middle habitable floor area. Uh, twenty-two hundred square feet is the limit, uh, however, when we look at all the other measurements with respect to, uh, massing on a property, we are compliant with the R five, uh, requirements for block coverage, for building coverage, and for FAR, we fall within the, uh, R five requirements for FAR. When, uh, we look at this with respect to the R seven point five, uh, we are compliant with respect to FAR. The maximum square foot requirement, uh, maximum habitable square footage will be three thousand and twenty, we are at three thousand three hundred and seventy. Uh, forty-five percent is permitted in terms of block coverage. We are coming down to fifty percent, which is compliant with the R five, however, the R seven five has a forty-five percent block coverage and would have a deviation there. Uh, we're consistent with the building coverage requirements for the R seven five district, as well as the height requirements, and the R seven five has the same expectation with respect to rear and side yard setbacks as the R five, so again, those are minor deviations. Uh, that gives you a little bit of a benchmark in terms of how larger lots are treated, because this is something that's, uh, somewhat out of character for the R five, although the home directly across the street is similarly sized, um, and also deal with the house that exceeds three thousand square feet. Uh, in going through the requirements for the variance relief, we look to your master plan in terms of what your, uh, what your expectations are. The master plan, uh, and subsequent examinations all encourage borough action for the appropriate use of land and to scale, uh, existing neighborhoods properly with lots and like. It seeks to maintain character of neighborhoods, doesn't seek to do anything disruptive, and it's particularly concerned with infill construction and new construction, tear downs, and looking to maintain the character. Uh, the house on this property dates back to, uh, nineteen fifty-two, pursuant to your tax records. Uh, it did go through your historic commission, there were some comments, uh, to Al's plan with respect to the, the several points you just discussed on the, the elevation. So we think in terms of the neighborhood character, it would be maintained by this application, again, the house sits back somewhat screened from the street, uh, what we're proposing, I don't believe will have any negative impact on the, on the neighborhood character or the streetscape, because it is so distant, it is not something that's readily, uh, apparent as you walk down the street. Uh, with respect to public purposes, again, an app, an application isn't just for the benefit of the applicant, there have to be some public benefits to this. Uh, I believe there are three, and these are reiterated within the municipal land use law. Uh, they're, they're done by letter, so the three that I believe would apply to this application are E, the promotion and establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that'll contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and the preservation of the environment. And this is a single-family home, it'll continue to be a single-family home. Alex plane to be, uh, kind of issues with respect to how the allocation of square footage in this home is, it has a large first floor with a lot of space that's frankly wasted and not readily conducive to bedrooms with, for family living. What we're trying to do and the goal of this application is to create a home that is, is family-friendly, where young children and parents can be on the same level with respect to bedrooms and bathrooms and, and those kind of things, and unfortunately, we have a footprint that we have to live with, and in order to do that, uh, what we're proposing is a modest one hundred eighty-eight square foot alteration in order to accomplish that. Uh, G, provides sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses in open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, to meet the needs of the New Jersey citizens. Again, it's a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood, uh, in terms of the overbuilt limitations on the lot while we exceed the square footage requirement. Uh, we are consistent with your FAR, with your block coverage and with your building coverage. They don't believe this is essentially, when we look at the limitations and the capabilities of a lot that we're overbuilding on. We are somewhat scaled to the size of the lot, and it is oversized for the area. We do have a home that starts out, uh, larger than what your footprint would, and, and massing would allow, uh, in terms of the habitable square footage. But again, I think with the modest addition here, we, we accomplished something that'll maintain this home as, as a livable uh, property without significant tear down risks or any, any major alterations. And finally, M is to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and for the more efficient use of land. And it speaks to the, uh, the position here that we're going with an alteration to an existing home as opposed to more disruptive tear down, looking at it in terms of reconstruction of the property. Uh, it's, it's a simple addition over a garage, we're working within the existing footprint, we're not doing any modifications to the foundation, we can work with that. Uh, what we're essentially doing is raising the roof eight feet over an existing envelope in order to accommodate two additional bedrooms and bathrooms, uh, for family living, so I think when we look at the purposes of municipal land use law, we are on point with those. Uh, in addition, I would offer that we are, as a, as a measure of this application, reducing the coverage of a lot to something that is compliant with the R five district. Uh, it's currently non-compliant, but one of the benefits of this application is bringing that into conformity with the zoning requirements. And that brings us to, uh, the use variant, uh, sorry, the bulk variance relief that's required, and as this board knows, there are two types of, uh, bulk or C variances. There's the C one, which is, uh, driven by existing conditions or structures on the lot, that's essentially the hardship aspect, or the C two, or the balance test, where the benefits of the application outweigh any deference. Uh, the C one criteria is appropriate by which to view the setbacks. We have a footprint that has some minor vi- violations with respect to rear yard and side yard setbacks. Uh, we're not, uh, essentially expanding those in any direction, uh, we are going up. But again, the, the addition that's going up is compliant with the envelope and the height that's permitted within the district, and the deviations in terms of setback are so minor that I don't believe they would impinge on light air and open space with the neighbors. The other thing to consider here, uh, in terms of how the side yards, uh, measure up, is this house is slid back about eighty feet along the lot. The neighbor immediately to the right, uh, where you would see side yard, the side yard on a typical lot, uh, is actually The neighbor immediately to the right, where you would see side yard to side yard on a typical lot, is actually forward of that. So you don't have that visual of side yard to side yard. They're somewhat offset because of the setback of the home on this lot. Under the C2 criteria, which I believe we would justify all the variance relief, in particular, the, the extra square footage. We would have to show that this is a unique situation on a specific lot. It is, that the purposes of municipal land use law would be advanced by this deviation. I believe there are at least three that would be advanced by this. And that the benefits of the deviation without any, without any detriment. So when we look at the benefits of this, again, we're trying to make this home livable without going to the total destruction of the property and the nuisance and destruction to the neighborhood. This is an addition over an existing home. It makes it more livable, I think it makes the home sustainable for quite a period of time. And the benefits here are obviously that it becomes a family conducive home, even though there's additional square footage beyond what would be typically anticipated within your district. Then we go to the negative criteria. Where the variance could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. When we look at substantial detriment, I don't believe we rise to that level. The home is already oversized for the district and it's within the fabric of the neighborhood, it's been this way for a long time. Writing 188 square feet over the garage. It's within the massing envelope that's permitted within your district with respect to height. When I look at negative. Impacts upon the neighborhood, I typically look at it, are we creating additional noise or shadowing any drainage issues, any trash, traffic? None, this will continue to operate as a single-family home, it's in a single-family neighborhood. So we're not creating any kind of substantial detriment to the, to the neighbors and for the public good. And then finally, that the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Again, by all means, within your districts. We, we're compliant with lot coverage, we're compliant with building coverage, we're compliant with FAR. We are over an habitable floor area. And part of that is driven by the existing footprint of the house and the fact that the lot is oversized and at some point accommodated this footprint and the massing that's there today. So your zone plan has various metrics, we need a majority of those metrics. The home will not have a significant impact on the visual aspects as your master plan is concerned about. Because it is tucked away and that's the unique feature of this lot with respect to the shape and how the house is positioned. So when we look at this on balance, I do believe the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantial detriment to your, to your ordinance and plan. And ultimately, I think it's an efficient way to make this house more.
Mr. Sardo, we've talked about an increase in square footage at 188 square feet. What I remember from the hearing in January is not understanding how the house became as large as it is. I remember a series of issues with regard to the rear yard and improvements in the rear yard. Can you help the board understand with regard to what sits there today? And where exactly the approvals came from with regard to permitting or variances that were granted to leave us with a house at. 3,200 plus or minus, if that's what it sits as today, or you want to change?
I mean, there's a series of approvals from the 90s and resolutions from the board. I don't have all the plans admittedly for that, but.
What did the resolutions in the 90s authorize to be built here in terms of all the square footage? Recognizing that there's a new way of calculating square footage, which you're taking advantage of and you present it as it is what it is. But what exactly was approved?
The resolutions that they provided with, one of them being from March 19th and 4th. Is a resolution that provides for construction and an elevated tent to wide by 8 foot deep elevated deck at the rear of the existing dwellings. From my knowledge, that is not there. So I don't think, right, this, there's not much detail, it's a two-page resolution. The other resolution that I could provide was in November 19th, 1993 resolution. That grants furniture construct, a two-story addition and a one-story two-car garage at the premises. Again, this is a two-page resolution that does not go into the details of. Bulk standards, measurements, square footage. And I, I don't have plans, I don't, I don't believe that you received the copy of those plans.
No, I think there's burial drawings in the records, but I don't think it has the same type of breakdown that we would see today.
So I, I think we concluded in January that the deck may not exist as was approved in 94, but that there were improvements in the backyard. Mr. Sisius, can you show us where the improvements are in the backyard and can you confirm with us that they're compliant?
The existing improvements to deck. Yeah, the deck, we can see it in the property survey, it's pretty much activated through the first floor. It appears, the setback, I would think would need to, it's attached to the house, I would think. Has to comply with the principal setbacks, so therefore it wouldn't comply.
How much?
So most of that, I would say is about. The bulk of the deck looks to be about 12 feet off the rear properties, whereas 30 feet is required. There is a little bit of an offshoot, like a little landing that comes even closer, maybe seven or eight feet. So.
Mr. Sardo, what is the 2000, sorry, 1994 resolution approved with the board to set back for the deck that doesn't exist?
It is not delineated in this resolution.
Okay, with regard to the other resolution from 1993, I understood that resolution authorized the construction of a two-car, one-story, two-car garage. And I understand that that's currently being used as living space.
Yeah, that's my understanding of it, average.
And do we believe that the space that's currently being used as living space was approved by that resolution?
I, I don't believe it was, and I think that the applicant acknowledges that it's not, you know, you don't see the insulation in that space. That would indicate that it was originally drafted that way.
Mr. Jan, with regard to your testimony and the suggestion that what we're doing is we're increasing the size of an existing house by 188 square feet. Do you think that that's an accurate statement in light of the fact that it's not clear that we have any authority granted to former owners with regard to the house that exists there today and now it's being used?
Again, I'm strictly going by the calculations that the architect provided pursuant to your ordinance and what's there today. And we agree, we don't believe the improvements over the garage are permitted. Or constructed with, you know, anticipated in any construction periods and probably not constructed to code, frankly.
Can you tell the board what the deviation is from what would be, what would exist today if it were being used as it was originally authorized from what you proposed?
If you were going to not count that area at all, we're talking about.
Just to be clear, the presentation is that you're increasing the size of the existing house by 188 square feet. The testimony of the planner was that we had a minor deviation in order to make this house livable. I'm suggesting to you that that may not be exactly representative of the situation. And I'd like to understand what the real situation is from what was previously approved to what you proposed to build.
I would say right now, the area above the garage, not finished, but is calculated through the zoning ordinance, is giving us about. Roughly 400 square feet.
And then on top of that, from what you're asking is the 100 feet?
Yes, so that would be 580, if you were going to discount the area above the garage.
So Mr. Janet, Mr. Jan, I always struggle with your expectations. How does that difference between 188 square feet and 500 and how many, 588? Clearly using, clearly using up numbers.
Yeah.
So how does that affect the testimony that you provided to the board?
Well, quite frankly, whether that's space that's legitimate or not in terms of square footage. What we are seeking to do again is put a second story over the garage. That is the deviation that's requested. It's a question of how that square footage was calculated. We're not counting the existing space that's there today, whether that was there legitimately or not. We are seeking a, an area over the garage that's 588 square feet in order to accommodate the bedroom. That is, again, a deviation from it, the house is still over, even taking that away in terms of what the district permits. However, as I testified, that addition, and it won't change the appearance, is still in a portion of the lot that's back. It's within the height that's permitted, it's, that backs are generally consistent, again, small deviations, less than one foot at the actual deviation point. And a majority of the house, and we're concerned when we look at that in totality, of the massing of the entire house. A majority of the house to the left of the property is not visible from the street because it's screened. So in terms of impact to the neighborhood and impact to the streetscape, I still believe it's de minimis, even though calculating that deviation as 588 versus 188.
When you, when you talk about it as 188, it's. Kind of deceptive because that 400 that exists is under. The current roof.
Correct.
So what you're doing is you're raising that 400 and an additional 188, eight feet above what exists now.
Which is still within the permitted height envelope for the addition.
But you were in pair, 588, let's say you were coming from the 588 now, which in a sense is what it is. You wouldn't characterize that as a means.
No, and I didn't characterize the 188 dimension, it was, again, what we're doing in terms of massing is putting it over the garage. We're not hiding any of that, the garage will be lifted eight feet, there will be that mass. And that's, that's the deviation I'm requesting over the existing footprint. We're not going out, we're not exceeding the height requirement. We are working with an existing footprint, and again, the testimony is that there's a significant. Or inefficiency to, to the home as it sits today with the allocation of square footage on first floor and not having any usable space for additional. Bedrooms or bedrooms that would be conducive to family life with small children. So we do need that space in order to make this house more livable for a family, particularly with three children, third coming on the way.
With, with the flag shaped lot. Do you feel like that full of 10,000 square feet is what supports the size of this house? Where, when, when that, that front portion of the flag is not really. Part of what you consider your building envelope?
No, but it is, well, it is part of the building envelope because there is a portion of that that could be built upon. The house that sits there today and that original footprint that goes back to 52 was set back. But yeah, I am relying on the shape of the lot because, as I mentioned, the unique feature of this is that because of the shape, the house is pushed back. And really screened from view, when we're looking at the neighborhood and the continuity of the neighborhood. If this were up along the street frontage, it would be noticeable.
Right, but because of the shape.
Because of the shape and the way it's set back and the way it's screened.
Two-thirds square in the back of the lot.
A two-third square actually exceeds what the minimum lot area would be for the R5.
Right, but you way exceed the square footage already.
Yes, we do exceed it, but again, by your, your other metrics in terms of measurement of a house on a lot.
You say the other metrics, but the reason that the cap was added. Was because they believed that there should be more restraint than those other metrics. So they added a cap and you're exceeding that cap and you're exceeding the cap already from the next zone up.
The house, the house today exceeds the R5, the house today is consistent with R7.5.
Is it?
No, it's over. It's over R7.5.
30, 20 is.
30, 20, if we're saying we're adding 588.
You're over 30, 20 existed.
Well, where, the, the, where we started was that you're already, if we're trying to figure out where you should be legally, you are under.
That's right, we're backtracking those 588, we're under.
And, and the other question I have, you, you talked about all the setbacks that you have only given us.
Yeah, it's actually the front of the garage, the front of the garage is compliant, the back of the garage is well by one.
Where, where did you get the rear yard setback?
The rear, I'm measuring it to the garage, which is what's going to be impacted by the addition.
But that's not the rear yard setback of the house.
That's a portion of the rear, that's not the rear yard setback of the house, though.
But this is how we analyze it to the purpose of the variant.
Right, but you can't put that on a, yeah, okay. What's the actual rear yard setback of the house?
Well, varies, it's as close as seven feet.
It varies, it is whatever is the closest point to the property.
Closest point is the left side of the house, which is, I think, 7, 10.7.
There's a true rear yard setback of the house.
Which again, is not changing by virtue of.
I understand that, I'm, I'm just.
So the, the rear yard setback, with regard to what you're exacerbating with the proposed addition, the rear yard setback is within a foot of compliance, is that correct?
Point nine, yes.
And the side yard setback is within a foot of compliance?
One tenth of one foot.
Okay, on the side yard setback where you're exacerbating the balance of the structure complies with the setback, it's all one foot short?
Well, actually, the front of that garage is compliant, the front of that garage is setback at point, at 7.1, so seven's required.
Look, so, so this is the problem I have with this application, I had this problem in January. When you look at the addition, you can look at it one way, but you have to start by looking at the house. What I'm asking you is how far the side yard setback is with regard to the main structure of what's there today. It's within one foot of what's required, correct?
That's correct.
And in the backyard, you're exacerbating the pre-existing non-conformity condition with regard to the garage by approximately a foot. But you have improvements that are as close as seven feet to the property boundary elsewhere. And you have other improvements which we don't know that there's ever been any approvals granted for their existence, which exceed that, that setback requirement as well, correct?
Meaning the depth.
The current house is more than 500 square feet over the minimum, and that was approved in 1993, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Is, are you testifying before this board that the incremental increases of the, the size of the structure on this lot? Do not matter to zoning and that we should simply allow. Allow ourselves to understand this to be there and simply modified slightly in order to make it work? Or does the board need to consider all the deviations in total? And try and get a handle on whether or not the total structure at 3,300 square feet in an R5 zone. It's more than 1,100 square feet over what the zone requires, permits. Can we not take all that into account? Should we not? Because I'm having trouble getting through all those existing, to get to the de minimis change that presented to us. That we should consider in order to make this house more useful in 2024.
No, you, you, you should consider that as you did in the application with the lot across the street, which again, was an 11,000 square foot lot in the R5 zone. With the house that was a little over 3,000 square feet approved, and I believe that was new construction. So there are factors such as the size of the lot and specific to this lot, the shape of the lot, which I think diminish the impact of these inconsistencies. Yes, the house is larger than, than is the minimum habitable floor area, but there are offsetting conditions that soften that, meaning the size of the lot. The, the rear of the lot being set back and having a significant portion of the house screened, not being something that's interrupting of the, the streetscape or the neighborhood's. Character or pattern. And the fact that the addition that's being proposed over the garage still falls within the envelope of height and has a de minimis setback itself. So in terms of intrusion, and we look at this in terms of impact on the neighbors, impact on the community. The, the intrusion is de minimis and within the expectations that I mentioned within light air and open space with this, that zoning seeks to protect. We are protective of that in the manner that we're doing this. So it's, it's my opinion that we have, we have a foundation, we have a footprint, we have a house that's non-compliant. We're trying to make it more livable, there are limited ways to do that. I think what we selected to do is very efficient in terms of it's simply adding eight feet over a garage structure, we're not expanding any foundations. We're not demolishing anything, we're not creating trash, we're not creating nuisance to the neighborhood in terms of long-term construction, excavation and the like. So it's, it's an efficient method of being able to make a house that's already problematic more livable and sustainable.
But at the same time, you're leaving what even you described as wasted space on the left side of the, the first floor of that house.
I said it was inefficient space in terms of being able to be used as a bedroom. Because it's, it's removed from the second floor, again, a family with children, especially with newborns and young children, want to be proximate. You don't want to be on a separate level where you can't hear the children or get to them quickly in terms of an issue. Trying to make this something that's consistent and conducive to family life.
Mr. Jan, if you were proposing to build this entire house brand new, all of it. It was a vacant lot, you want to build it exactly as it sits today, would your testimony be the same?
I, I haven't looked at it from that perspective.
The problem I have is that there's no question in my mind, you wouldn't approve that house. The problem I have is that there's no question in my mind that you wouldn't approve that house until. I understand the argument that the incremental increase in the size of the square footage is de minimis if you look at it a particular way. But the end result is something that this board, in my view, would never approve as a total project. And the problem is that you're not coming to us with a house that is there. Based on some previous board's approval. Or based on pulling permits and compliance with, with the, the requirements.
Well, my, my understanding is the house footprint was permitted with the addition in the garage. That, that is my understanding. And to the extent that the, the rear deck that we've talked about. Is not permitted, let's have a discussion about that because certainly that, that application certainly doesn't rise and fall on, uh, um. A deck, and I know the applicant feels that way. So if, if that's something that changes how the, the board feels, happy to discuss that.
What are the setbacks on the piece of the house that sits to the set?
Uh, the, the rear one-story portion, which we believe was the original house, uh, is about eight point eight. On the side, left side of George's setback and the rear setback is ten point six.
And what other requir-
Requirements on the rear yard setback are thirty, uh, and the side order setback is seven and sixteen total. So I would say since sevens, almost sevens provide on the right side, I would think the, the left side would have to be nine. So I think the left side's pretty close because it's eight point nine, eight point eight. So I think the combined side or setback is, I think, combined point three below the total.
They deviate by three or four inches of the combined total requirement.
I think the issue is the rear yard setback is not thirty, it's ten point six.
If, if everything else on that lot was compliant, I think that the argument would be strong to increase the size of this house by a hundred and eighty eight square feet. Not only is it not compliant, it's clearly not. It, it, it seems to me that it, it has never been approved or authorized. And the idea of granting an approval is effectively granting, um. What, what's the saying? Don't ask for permission, ask for forgiveness. That's how it feels to me. It feels like what the board would effectively be doing. I'm happy to clarify.
The, the footprint, from what we understand, has been approved. I think the main thing architecturally, the decks, I'm not commenting on that, is the area above the garage was finished. Apparently without permits. I don't think it would have ever gotten approved for building code. Uh, and then that would, we were counting by the order of the stat toward the square footage. So the square footage instead of one eighty eight increase. Really, if you're going to discount that, which I think is a reasonable approach, is five eighty eight. But the footprint in the bulk, I believe was all approved. That's our understanding.
Resolution.
So it's that, that.
So that rear intention.
I, I got it. I got it. In ninety three, this board, I wasn't on that. Anybody else on that? They granted permission to build the garage adjacent to an existing structure. They permitted at that time, house that was in excess of square footage permitted within, in the zone, I'm just guessing, but five hundred square feet in excess. That issue was addressed in nineteen ninety three. In nineteen ninety four, this board was asked to grant a deviation with regard to a deck. Today, what we have is a deck that isn't there, the existing deck that is not consistent with what the original approval was. We have effectively moved through whatever the consideration was for allowing the house to be five hundred square feet larger than what was permitted. And we now have in addition to that, the use of the second floor in a way that is not identified in the resolution. We've all agreed that it isn't compliant with, with, with safety codes or, or any of the rest. We have a, a situation which we're then being asked to view as a small deviation from what's there today. To make it more usable and livable. And that's your best argument. I got it, but we're skipping over all the hard stuff to get there. And I can't. Understand how we would allow this house to be built if we were starting from the beginning and you don't have. An existing approved project to say, I'm going to deviate from what somebody else said was okay. By adding a hundred and eighty eight square feet to make it more livable. In fact, you're also taking advantage of the fact that we've changed the way we calculate square footage. So even those numbers are actually more generous than they would have been back in the day. I, 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 it was a problem that we had in January. It's a problem that I still see here today. I understand the argument. I understand. The, the problems with the way the house is laid out. But I don't understand how this board can solve that problem by allowing it to become six hundred square feet bigger. And to the extent that all we're really doing is adding eight feet. I'm not seeing an effort to contain this, to use what you already have, to reuse that, to remove stuff. You didn't come in and say the deck's gone. You, you have, you didn't talk about it until I raised it. And the fact that you're only seven feet off the rear yard matters. The, the, the impact of this house on the surrounding properties in all directions. Is evaluated by me based on your compliance. And frankly, on three sides, I see substantial. Deviations from what's permitted. And, and I don't see a. A process that's followed to get you here. Based on other people saying, we understand it, we're going to grant the variance. Instead, I see variance is granted in good faith by the board. And I see a house, it wasn't this owner. I get it. I get it.
They, they came, they got a CO, they moved in.
They moved it. I got it. I got it.
They, like many others who live in the borough, find themselves surprised that what was fitted out is not. Compliant. And I don't think most buyers go to, or, or attorneys do over request. And I'm not saying that's not an excuse for this application.
Let, let's take back. What's the ceiling height above the garage? When you walk into that space, how tall is it?
Seven feet most, probably like six and a half.
Al, under what circumstances would you walk into that space and assume that this is legitimate space? That this is, this has definitely been permitted.
Um, I don't, I don't think that's, that's Mr. Sardo's point as much as not understanding that you can't build additional. I, I don't think they necessarily bought the house thinking, oh, this is legit space as much as. Why can't, most people just don't understand, so that, you know.
I understand.
They don't realize the floor area.
I believe the house was sold to us as a four-bedroom home. Uh, so the three, that included as a bedroom in the listing, the house in that one.
And that doesn't even have legal egress. So I don't know how someone sold it to you as a value.
I understand how difficult the situation is. The board is not allowed. We're not, we're not authorized to grant an approval based on the personal situation that you find yourself in. What our job is, is to understand the neighborhood, to understand the zoning, to try and understand what the council is telling us should be okay. And to grant deviations when it's appropriate. Mr. Jenna did a great job of explaining when we should be doing it. Had we taken it from what was originally built in nineteen fifty two and we worked our way all the way here to where all we need is a hundred and eighty eight square feet to make it work. This board does that every single month. We absolutely do. But you are putting us in an incredibly difficult position to suggest that it's only a hundred and eighty eight square feet. And when I look at a project, which we would never approve on its own, and I get that that's not all your problem, and I also understand that that's not an entirely fair way to look at. But at the end of the day. It has to be considered. And it's just. It's not close.
Well, and. I'm not going to, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I'd, I'd also, I guess, suggest that if this were a knocked down home. You comply with all the standards, you meet the R seven five s, uh, square footage. And then you end up looking at the overall volume of the house, which we don't do, which we look at the habitable square feet. Someone would objectively probably go and say, that's a really big house. That's bigger than the one that's there with you.
Mr. Sardo.
I don't think you could.
Mr. Sardo, the requirements of R five are exactly what for this lot?
R five, R twenty-two hundred.
I'm sorry, did I say R five? What, if it were R seven five?
Three thousand twenty.
You're only using the square footage. What are the rest of the requirements for the lot in order for us? By the way, we allow you to up some. You don't even need to come. If you can comply with R seven five, you can do it. What are the requirements to get to thirty twenty?
Our other deviations. Currently that we're, would need for R seven five would be a coverage, five hundred square foot further reduction. And then there's the small deviations in the side yard. Just the side yards for R five and R seven five are the same.
What about the lot?
But your rear yard, that's what I'm saying.
You don't have front.
If you were building new, that rear yard.
You can do it all. You can do it all. You can say R seven five, but you gotta meter. You can't selectively look to R seven five and just talk about the bulk without recognizing that it's got to be the bulk package. And to the extent that you aren't R seven five, you've got to acknowledge that, that, that bulk can't be looked at alone. That the lot you need, you can make that argument, but, but it's not an R seven five lot. It doesn't comply.
Can I go back to one thing that you mentioned? So the house was marketed to the four-bedroom. There's three bedrooms upstairs, so either the office or the den, or the office or the den downstairs is.
Yeah, there's an office that has a, a closet in it, so I, I, they have essentially.
That's a bedroom.
Yeah, that counts as a bedroom. Um, it's. For our needs, we have.
Yeah, I understand. No, I understand it very far away, but it, it's a bedroom. We did support that, yeah.
But what I'm, my point is it was sold to us as a four-bedroom and if we're. If we're debating the legitimacy of that room above the garage, that is, and what is one of the bedrooms that they, but one of the floor that they took.
And there's been no consideration to remove square footage from the existing, from the original one-story. Portion on the left hand side.
Um, I, I.
I mean, I get it. It's there. It's good space, but when you're. Asking for an egregious amount over and above what's permitted. That's got to come to some consideration.
Well, the other issue is where the addition is being constructed. Look, there's nothing easy about this house. We talked about that in January too. But if you were putting the addition back where it couldn't be viewed. I assume Mr. Jenna would have a completely different and stronger argument to say that you can't even see it from the street. But it's actually front and center. So instead, we pivot to the argument that the access on the other side can't be seen. I get it, but it's still fifty percent over what's permitted within the zone. And it's still six hundred square feet new. Okay, so we've done a lot of back and forths and I thank you for accommodating the questions. Do you have any more testimony?
Uh, I don't. Could I, I guess just a moment to discuss that with it?
Sure.
Maybe take five minutes.
I'm gonna, just know I'm gonna open to the public either way. Would you like me to do that first?
Uh, that's fine.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that aren't here for Seaton Sprouts who would like to step forward and ask any questions? Please step forward.
Uh, hello again.
You saw him swear the testimony you give before the board is the truth, all truth about the truth.
I did.
Can I ask for your name, state, spelling your last name, please?
Uh, Nathaniel Matthews, M A T H U W S.
Thank you. Who is yours?
Uh, I live next door at thirty-two in Armady, which is, as mentioned last time, past to the right.
Is that to the north? So that's lot four.
Correct, left four. It's the one next to the garage, which would be, so arguably the most impacted. Sat through this last time, still believe this time. Uh, I understand where you were, the void is coming from, maybe this is. Much bigger than what's around the, what the zoning allows. But, um. I think that I have probably four points that I, that I was thinking about back there. Yeah. Um, one, I think that what's, this conversation feels like it's painting these guys into a corner. Where it suddenly becomes more economically and legally feasible, viable to, uh, knock the house down. Um, I don't want that. You don't, you said last time you don't want that. Um, but it just feels, feels like there's no solution here where they get what they want. I think that the suggestion that they knock. The, what's actually the original structure, the. The one-story violating area of. From the north is ridiculous because it's perfectly good space. Um, you even brought up the point last time that that space. This house that has a basement, that space kind of functions as the finished basement. Um, obviously you can't just. Subtract that, but from a, from a practical standpoint, I think that's a fair consideration in the favor. Um. You know, from my. Personal experience of the house, it was seventy degrees the other day. There, my unit was. Firing away in that space above the garage. I think a properly insulated, properly ventilated room would, uh. Improve my quality of life, whether, whether it's a fire. So once again, I. I think there's a path forward here. That. This is actually better. And I hope that.
Anyone else have any questions or comments regarding the die confirmation? You want to take them in?
Yeah.
Mr. Shad, we'll go back to your, uh, yeah, let's, uh. Yes.
Few administrative items, uh, March fifth special meeting I did not attend, but Mr. Dr. Lauper was. Dr. Lauper, can you make a motion for a minute from the March fifth special?
I made a motion.
We'll call you right.
Uh, no, I was not here.
I'm sorry, I can't. I'm gonna have to ask everybody to keep it down, please. Did you call my name? Excuse me. Oh, Mr. Forte. Now, you're doing a more day. Wonder, can you step back a bit, please? There's a motion to approve the special minutes from the March fourth meeting.
See your vote.
Uh, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, approved. To appeal a person that we did, uh, mad five fifty River Road, I make a motion to approve the resolution as submitted for the energy five fifty River Road.
Second.
Mr. Natchez.
Yes.
Sianzo, yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Uh, Dwyer application twenty-three inch road. I make a motion to approve the resolution for Dwyer twenty-three inch road.
Second.
Mr. Natchez.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
At the locker. Mr. Missawa.
Yes.
It don't appear I approve this at more seventh regular meetings than this. Uh, I have reviewed the minutes from March seventh. I have no, uh, changes to make. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from March seventh regular meetings. Yes.
Yes.
Sir Ryan.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Um, review of the history.
Okay, okay. What, Sheila, are we, uh, are we need a discussion about with regard to be up?
Uh, just kind of wanted to keep you apprised of what we have coming up, so that it is aware on the three schedules. So, but we have them tonight. We have mad on this soon. In May, we have the reapplication scheduled, Thompson, Listery, and Ball. In June, we have two occupations, Willing and Nelson. In July, we have one Doyle and a request from Goods to. Um. Move to August.
The, the one for the lives proposing to move to August? But is that the only one that we had in July was good sport or is that?
Yeah, it would have been two in July, but they requested two.
Okay, so there's still one on the book in, in July.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's where we are.
There's one more incomplete too. That could be repeated soon. Then, of course, I guess this little offer in June, we want to add third, there's carryover. Well, considering.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to carry good one and, um. That's gonna put four back to May, and so, uh, I'm gonna suggest we consider a special for June. Um, because we're. Um, because we're gonna need it by then. But you're back, Mr. Spardon, so let me just make sure I understand. You, you've completed your testimony, you opened to the public. There was one member of the public that spoke, and you asked for a news feature on it. Board hasn't deliberated, you didn't technically propose. We're back to you.
Um, but, you know, I spoke to the client, I think there's a lot of comments here today that I didn't necessarily anticipate, uh, and I think we'd wanna take an opportunity to react to, so we'll ask for, in a general, to do that and come back for the board later day.
Um, I, I will, I will make that motion. Mr. Shardo? What? Yeah, we, we would ask you to wait, uh, your, the, the time that we're at. I, I wanna just throw a practical observation, okay? The eight feet up is creating full habitable space within the six hundred square feet above. It's not the minimum to make this area, but if you start from understanding what it's gonna take to convert that space into something usable, add a couple of dormers and figure out a way to tighten it up, and you come back and you take us through what that additional space is in total, but you've shown us how you minimize what that is. I, I think that it would have a bigger impact. You know that we don't negotiate as to how this is done, but we, we talked about it in January, and usually when people go, they, they, they take those thoughts and they modify plans. What we came back with tonight was largely what we saw in January, entirely what we saw in January. So I feel like we've done it twice. I don't want you to go back and not understand that I see that when I look at this in terms of a path forward. I, 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 I'm still troubled by some of the pre-existing, non-conforming, non-permitted, non-approved items with regard to the house. But, but at least I could understand, you know, right? You, you following me?
No, a hundred percent of them. That's the part of my discussions.
Okay. So you've asked us to carry, um, what you missed is, um, all of our discussions about, um, basically having no time through July and needing potentially to schedule a special to June so that we can catch up. I, I don't think in this moment that we can tell you where we would carry you to. But if you communicate with, with the board secretary with regard to where you're at and when you're ready, we're gonna do the best we can, and if we've got this special coming in in June, it, it, it may well be that we can pick you up there. I, I just, I just don't know.
Um, can we be listed for, for a date just for the purposes, can we be carried without further notice, or is this gonna be on notice if we don't have a date?
I think we can carry you without further notice, and if you wanted a hearing, it would be July.
Please, we don't have a date for the special in June yet, and we don't know what this, you know, what may carryovers you to look, so.
For practical purposes, we assume everybody here that wants to be heard on this application has been heard, and you want to do that without additional notice, we're announcing we'll do this in July. Yeah, in July, so yes, then you don't have to notice, but if it's something else, you go into that renotice issue.
Understood.
Well, if it's beyond July, we could announce it in July. If for some reason we get through some stuff and we can see sooner than, and you can notice, then we could do it soon.
Great, and I, I'll put on the record that I grant the extension time to actually the July date, and if you need that in writing, happy to do that when I get back to my office tomorrow.
Sure. Because we'll all forget as soon as you leave. I'll make a motion to carry it to run.
I second.
Thank you.
We'll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Alan Walker?
Yeah.
S. Pincella?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So is there anyone here in the Goodwin matter? I did receive a call, and I'll put this in the way, I didn't receive any, I, I didn't speak with him, had an opportunity to speak to counsel uh, who advised that we did have an application recently, another, another venue might be running late. Um, he would, he said he would advise me, we, I'm saying, you know, the application. You don't know if this people are doing without, but, okay. So just to be clear, there's no one here on the Goodwin matter? Okay, so we're going to move the Goodwin matter, we're about to hear Sticks and Sprouts, so what do we need to do with Goodwin since there's nobody here to talk about? Keep it, I can try to reach out to Mr. Akins, but I.
I spoke to him earlier, and he said he's gonna be coming late, and that he understood that she's later on the agenda.
We'll talk, we'll talk to him later, then, and we'll, and we'll deal with it later. Sticks and Sprouts. Did the applicant, Sticks and Sprouts, step forward? I'll swear all your witnesses in if you wanna bring them up.
I'm here for the Goodwin matter, I'm just trying to get my, sorry.
Are, are you Mrs. Goodwin?
Yeah.
So Mrs. Goodwin, what I was gonna tell you was that we were hopeful that we would be able to hear you tonight, but given the room full of people and the fact that it's now eight thirty and we haven't started Sticks and Sprouts, there's no chance we're gonna reach, so I didn't want you to wait any longer, hoping that we might be able to get to you later. So what we're gonna do is, if you wanted to reach out to Mr. Akins, so he doesn't unnecessarily come here, um, you can let him know that we were, we told you we were able to get to you. Um, we can have a discussion outside of the meeting as to when we can get you back on, but my, my thought would be that we're gonna bump you to the next meeting. So we would bump you to, uh, May, assuming that works. We have three from May, they're just gonna have to get pushed back. So we're gonna speak to Mr. Akins about doing that. Do you need to make an announcement with regard to anybody that could be here on Goodwin, if we're gonna move it that way?
I would make that announcement if we're fully in, but I'd rather have Mr. Akins be here. I don't know if it's down.
Well, no, I, I certainly hear that. Um, so is there a way to, is there a way to make the announcement so that if Mr. Akins can do it, we can roll right into next, we don't need to renotice?
True.
You wanna do that? Well, I'm, I'm gonna make that announcement. So with regard to the Goodwin matter, we're not gonna hear it tonight, we're gonna be moving it to the May meeting. If Mr. Akins can't make the May meeting, then we may have to ask you to renotice, because we wanna make sure that anybody who wants to be here through application understands when that application is gonna proceed. Uh, we'll have that discussion with Mr. Akins after tonight. Thank you. So move. Yeah. All three of them. Hey, I haven't bring all your witnesses in, oh. Dan, wherever you test, try and snap.
Jim and Emily, stand up.
Yours, as previously sworn, if you continue to sworn. It's honestly the customer that you please to respond to your tip ultimately.
Hi, Jeff.
And what I'm gonna ask you to, uh, YouTube.
Hello.
Okay, and what I'm gonna ask you to do the same stretch that I usually give out, before you start testifying, please state your name loudly, clearly, spell your last name, so we can make sure we have a record of that. Your commission counsel, Martin Zivest. If you have the additional, have to remark the additional ones, we'll hit those on page. What I have for you at this point in time. I have your zoning application dated August twenty-second, twenty-three as A-one. I have legal reasons why your variances should be approved as A-two. I have the zoning officer's letter of March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three as A-three. The completed land development checklist consisting of eleven pages is A-four. Dropping down, we have A-five, or a packet of images, four sheets, four, four images used for sixteen images. So A-five, A-six is a survey dated June fifteen, twenty-twenty-three. With a hand drawn edition on it, it does not look like it is in scale. That's A-six. A-seven, uh, looks like an aerial image of the site. In addition to that, we have uh, ZB-one, which is the engineering report, Mr. Vizzo of November seventh, twenty-twenty-three. We have ZB-two, again, there's an engineering report of January twenty-three, twenty, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Um, ZB-three is a packet of materials, um, involving Christ Church United Methodist, handwritten document from the planning board secretary, it looks like October sixth, nineteen eighty, a letter of October second, nineteen eighty, uh, from Robert Thomas, AIA, the Christ Church Site Plan, um, and an excerpt from the minutes. So it is, it's a few pages contemporaneous with that thing. Um, are there any other exhibits that you want the board to consider in addition to that? You are now at A-eight, if you have some, I see two boards of images.
Uh, that's correct. Um, there's two boards with photographs, um, of the site, though here, if you wanna get testimony about the foundation of those photographs right now, we could do that, or you could just wait until.
I'm pretty sure you're gonna tie it up, so we have two boards, how many total images on here?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine images on the photo board to your left, which will become A-eight. And one, two, three, four, five, six images on the board to your right, which would become A-nine.
Any other documents you want the board to consider?
Not at this time.
And as you go on, the next one is gonna be A-ten.
Right, so chair, Mr. Professor, um, I just go through the checklist waivers at this point in time for your assurance, right? Um, the first three that they're requesting are, uh, Monmouth County Planning Board, Freehold Soils, and Monmouth County Health Department. As, uh, condition of any approval, I would recommend that these outside agencies amongst any others that they identify the, uh, obtained and submitted to the board. So no exception to that, those waivers at this time. Um, the rest are more so geared towards site plans, um, versus will serve letters, um, which, for their testimonies, to if they need any utilities.
No, if they do need, is you would not, you would recommend it be part of the condition for the petition?
Yeah. Um, the next four, I recommend be provided, um, through subsequent submission, um, that would just be a title block on a plan sheet, um, name, address, owner number, property owner and applicant, an approval signature block. And then, um, formally depicting all of the existing proposed condition setbacks.
Say that again?
All the setbacks.
Are not shown on the side.
They have a, the survey, um, and the researchers are, are outside of, are, are well inside the footprint. So they've been, you know, approximated.
So you're looking for, uh, modification, I plan to show distances.
Correct.
So may I confirm we have two restrictions?
Yes.
Thank you. So you've got three which are outside agencies, you've got four which are technical detail. The outside agencies, you suggested we condition any approvals on those being obtained, as we learned before, as you just referenced, you're recommending that we simply require that that be done in the future, um, and added to the plans, and, and so we're through that, what's the next thing?
And then the remainder, um, I don't take any exceptions to waiving, um, at this point in time. It is size and location of all structures within two hundred feet of property, outside of property lines. And then a few plans, it's a grading utility plan, landscaping plan, soil erosion plan, lighting plan, and details. Um, again, I'll, I'll further their testimony if they speak to proposing any of those, don't really like to see that on plan. Uh, but at this time, doesn't intend to make their proposal anything.
Go through that one more time, please, or the, uh, a, a lighting plan.
Lighting plan, a soils erosion plan.
So a erosion plan which would relate to disturbance in relation to improvements, this application, um, as, as I understand, it doesn't propose any new improvement, correct?
Sure.
Third thing?
Landscaping.
And either, okay.
Ridding utility. And then construction details if they're.
All three of those last ones would relate to things that they were building, and I understand they're not proposing to build anything new.
Correct.
Okay, and, and your suggestion is that we need to weigh down conditions on the testimony, our ability to make those a condition as we call it.
Exactly.
Right, anybody have any questions about that? Everybody in agreement with our, with your interpretation?
Yeah, very good.
Just, just your questions. Sure, the applicant is not the owner of the site? That's correct. You know, the applicant has the ownership permissions for these things, how?
Yes, that is correct.
No, I do not recall seeing that in the back of the trees.
It was submitted.
Okay, very good, thank you. I missed it. Now I ask you to identify the principals in Sticks and Sprouts LLC to make sure that there are no conflicts. We did not have listed the, the principles in.
The principal of Sticks and Sprouts LLC, the applicant is, uh, sole member Emily McQ, who is seated to my left.
Thank you. Anyone have any more? Or you, Mr. Spardon?
Who is yours? Okay, so we're here for Sticks and Sprouts. Um, the property is three hundred Ridge Road, um, you know it as the I think I just the name of the church wrong. Um, Emily, help me out.
The Christ United Methodist.
Christ United Methodist. Um, on that site is the, uh, the church and a telecommunications tower. The area that Sticks and Sprouts is proposing to use and has been using, you'll get the background of that momentarily, is this squared off area on the westerly side, if you're looking at the survey. And I'm sorry, I don't have a poster board with it, but I don't have this ring. So, you know. I have several, if I am busy in the back here, if you'd like, I can divide, I'll be, I'm gonna stop it, but.
So what's that a part of?
Yeah. Now, the application.
Yeah.
Anything else need?
I'm gonna see the large one.
Yeah.
Yeah. For the area that we're talking about, if you're looking at the survey, um, Mr. Leader has it in front of him, it's on the westerly side of the property and the, a square shape denoting a wooden fence. And that is the area we're talking about. Um, within that area is food and some toys. And you'll hear more about that in a little while. Um, like I said, our witnesses this evening will be Emily McQ, who's the principal operator, uh, for the applicant, and, uh, Mr. Jim Higgins, uh, who's our professional planner. Um, Ms. McQ was sworn in, so, um.
Mr. Spardon, just to ask you a question, so you, you pointed us to the wood fence.
Right.
There's two sheds that are outside that fence. Your client has a lease to use the property, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Can you, can you tell us exactly what property they control pursuant to that lease? Is it simply all the area inside of the fence?
I can have Ms. McQ talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, so I, I leased the inside of the fence, and they have allowed me to use the sheds when I need them. Um, I know the Boy Scouts own one of the sheds, and the church owns the other one.
Okay, so your rights are to use this area to share use of both of the sheds? Is one of them yours?
No, one is, um, a former councilman's shed, actually.
Okay, so there's two sheds which you have some use of, but they're not their, your exclusive sheds.
Correct.
And do you have any other access to the parking area or the restroom facilities inside of the church?
Uh, I personally use the bathroom, no, no clients go inside the church ever, um, so that's not used for any of my clients, and they are allowed to use the parking lot.
Okay, Mr. Spardon, you seen the lease?
I have not seen the lease.
We make the, we exhibit it later days.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so Emily, can, can you just describe the origins of Sticks and Sprouts and, um, your motivation for starting the business?
So, um, Emily McQ, M C C U A. Uh, I'm a pediatric occupational therapist, and I previously worked in several school districts in the area and outpatient therapy. I saw a huge gap in services providing outdoor education and developmentally appropriate uh, learning opportunities for children, so I started Sticks and Sprouts to bridge that gap and create a safe, inclusive outdoor environment where children and families can come together, uh, to learn and grow.
And, um, can you talk about Sticks and Sprouts' mission a little bit more?
Sure, so our mission is to provide an inclusive outdoor learning environment to help our children grow, develop, and thrive. Fairhaven is very much a family-oriented town with a lot of children, and these parents want the best for their children, and our mission aligns with that. We want to provide a place for these kids to develop, um, the skills necessary for optimal growth.
So let's get into, um, the types and frequencies of classes that Sticks and Sprouts offers, so you can tell us like a little bit about what goes on in the classes and, and, and a bit about the schedule.
Sure, so we run our classes in four to six week semesters, um, and the days of the weekend change. We never have a class that begins before nine AM, and every class ends before six thirty PM. Um, right now, we're running classes on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and occasionally we do run weekend programming as well.
Can you run the year round? Was there a question on the board? Do you run all year round?
Uh, yes, all year round, anything above twenty degrees.
And, and can people just drive up and join in, or do you have to register?
So you have to pre-register, you sign waivers online, um, and then you're given all the details on class, that parking, things like that, so you do have to register.
Okay. Um, and can you just go into a little bit more about what exactly occurs during the class?
So we run two main types of classes, we run. So we run two main types of classes. We run a class for younger children, that's ages one and a half to five. And that's a caregiver and me format, so the caregivers must be with their child at all times. And then we run a drop-off program for ages four to eight. Um, and for that class, we spend some time at the site and then we also uh, secure permits through your Park and Recs Department and we use the trails, paying ten percent of registration fees back to the borough. And we start in twenty twenty-one, actually at the Fairhaven Nature Trail uh, entrance. And we needed more space, so I met with the Parks and Rec Board back in twenty twenty-one. And they actually recommended that I go to the church and ask if I could use the sheds for storage. I went to the church and they said, actually, you can lease this garden, which was an overgrown garden, so I took that over and that's how we ended up where we are.
I'm sorry, so the description of what you did did not, it didn't always happen within the fence?
No, so we used to operate at the uh, right next to the community garden at the nature trail entrance and I would secure permits through the Park and Recs Department. And then we needed more storage, so I met with them, I've had a board meeting. And they said, we can't allow you to have public sto- uh, storage on public property and they advised that I go to the church. So that's.
You say a board meeting, you're talking about the board for?
The Parks and Rec.
For.
Okay. Yeah.
So how long have you been?
Here?
In the fence area?
Two years. Almost two years, exactly.
Okay, I I don't want to spoil a little moment, okay.
So you you were talking about, well, you have a fresh board's memory about your um, your educational background and licensing.
Sure, so I'm a pediatric occupational therapist. And I, I work with children, um, in outpatient and school settings and I go into the homes. Um, as I said earlier, yeah, I have a master's degree in this and there is such a lack of play, um, and a really, a lack of education. So that's how this all got started.
Thank you. How many, how many children would be in each class?
So for our younger classes, the ages one and a half to five, anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two children, and for the drop-off classes, anywhere from ten to twelve.
So is that eighteen to twenty-two children plus one adult?
Correct.
So.
Of the caregiver.
So double that, forty, forty plus, how many instructors or?
Just none.
Okay, so.
For drop-off classes, we have three instructors, but for those classes, just.
And there's adequate parking in the church lot for for eighteen to twenty-two?
So we've been there for two years and there's never been a lack of parking.
You said you sometimes operate on the weekends. Does that come in conflict with your church parking?
Uh, no, and I'll, and I'll ask the church if they have like services that would, um, you know, run into the same time and create a lack of parking, but there's always been ample parking.
And and whether it's technically allowed or not, is the traffic through there when there are sporting events on the weekends uh, affects where you are, where you park, walking across to that fence area?
No, so I don't run on those like heavy Fairhaven sports weekends, we've never run classes, so it doesn't coincide.
And do your classes ever coincide with church services? I'm not sure if that question was asked directly.
No.
Do you have their schedule and do you uh, specifically seek out dates or times?
Well, I talk to the pastor quite often, so I run everything by him.
Does the church have um, like weekly meetings or anything, classes and anything that they have?
They don't run Sunday school or anything like that.
So just massive, um, Sunday or anything else they were?
Uh, that's all I'm aware of.
Mr. Sadi, I I did not understand, maybe I didn't read carefully enough. This started as something different than what's happening inside of the fence. Um, I'm not at all familiar with licensing, I'm not at all familiar with how um, an operation like you originally ran, Miss McQ operates. Um, but are there, you you said that you were getting permits from the, from the town? For the use of the park, so.
For the use of the trails, yeah.
Okay, so you were meeting on park property, so the use of the trails effectively is every time you had a class, you would have some special permission from the borough to be able to use the the public space that you were using.
Correct.
So do do you, I understand you have a background in education, of what what sort of what sort of licenses, right? What what, what what sort of governmental oversight is there to this process? And 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 I guess the real question is what's required and 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 what you have.
So because we don't work with infants and because we don't have any drop-off programs over two hours, we don't need a childcare licensing from the state.
So beyond the permits that you had from Fairhaven to be using the park area, there was nothing else that's legally required?
Well, I, yeah, correct. I'm fully insured and, um, but besides that, there's no other legal requirements.
But the insurance isn't something required of you, that's something you elected to do?
Well, in order to use the park property, I do need to add you guys as.
The town required you to do that. Did you still use that?
For drop-off classes, so only, so three classes a week, not for the bulk of my classes. And I continue to get permits. I have one right now.
So, so is it fair to make the connection that the original operation was legal, being operated exactly as it should? And that the movement of the classes inside of the fence area has triggered a land use process that that is why we're all here, and I mean all, all here. Um, and and that, and that the operation of the educational facility inside of this fence did not trigger any other licenses, any governmental oversight, that's, that's off the table, right? You're you're telling us you're entirely compliant with all of those things, because there's nothing. Okay?
I've called the state many times.
Uh, look, I I find it, I I I do find it remarkable. Um, because I'm familiar with daycare centers, I'm familiar with schools, I'm familiar with, I I mean, you can't put kids on a piece of land without being able to certify that it's environmentally clean, but site plan issues are site plan issues. That's what we're here for. But what you're representing to the board is that all of that stuff is compliant with law.
To the best of her knowledge, and she said she has checked and double-checked and triple-checked, that's correct.
Wasn't there something in one of the letters about the business not being registered with the borough?
We weren't previously, we are now. I was totally unaware, I needed to do that, and when I got the letter, I registered.
And how far back to the um, the walking tours before you got into the fence area? That was twenty twenty-one, right?
When we first started?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-one, correct.
That's when you started in the fence area.
Twenty twenty-two. April of twenty twenty-two is when we started in the fence area.
So twenty twenty-one was when you started with the the nature walks and the meetups? And then about twelve months later, you moved into the fence area?
Correct.
Okay. And can you give the specific dimensions of the, I see it gone, other dimensions related, so in the future, we know. We're talking about the same area.
Seventy-five, the uh, seventy-four maybe, it's almost a perfect square.
We can, we can make sure that's noted on any compliance plans, as addition of approval. Given that there's quite a few children involved, has there been any thought of expanding the area? Have we been down that yet?
Like a second location, sometimes of that, or did the current space? No.
Did you build the fence in there?
Uh, yeah, I put up the the fence.
Had there been a fence?
There had been a previous fence that we took down, I had permission from the church to put up.
Was the previous fence located in the same area? Was the previous fence permitted?
It was put up by the Boy Scouts, so.
And what was it used for?
I'm sorry?
What was it used for?
Uh, it used to be a community garden and then it was it was a pretty sad sight. When I got there, there was, so we cleaned it all up and put up the new fence, it was all broken down to your fence.
What, what was the fence made up of?
The previous fence? Metal?
Metal.
And what what recreational items do you have within the boundaries of the fence?
Um, so we have some benches when you first walk in and then on the, um, it's kind of split into two areas. On the second side, we have a large mud kitchen. We have wood chips, we have ramps, we have some toy trucks, uh. We have a children's garden, so there's some garden boxes in there.
It's been some years since my daughter was a metal flower, but if I recall, across this, across the the driveway, there was a playground there. Is that still there?
Correct.
Do you, do you make use of it?
No, that's metal flowers.
Slides, trampolines?
Uh, no.
No. So all those things you just listed, do they stay in the fence area all day, every day, or do they put them in sheds when you're done?
So the larger items, like the mud kitchen stays and the ramps, uh, the smaller toys and things like that, I'll go for that.
In the sheds?
Uh, no, actually, I have a storage unit in Tintin Falls where most of the stuff goes.
So do you bring them with you each time, or do they generally stay for a few weeks?
So they'll stay like right now, uh, Wednesday through Friday, they'll stay, but at the end of each series of classes, at the end of Wednesday, everything gets cleaned up, tarp'd over, things get put away, taken out the next morning again.
I assume it's safe to, to assume that you didn't get a permit when you built the fence that you replaced it with?
Correct.
And you didn't put the sheds there, they were already there?
Yeah, I think they've been there for like twenty years, they're.
And the structures on the inside of the fence, I'm understanding plate toys as you're describing, I don't know what a mud garden is. But are there, are there fixed structures?
No, I I mean, the, the mud kitchen is.
Can I, can you um, maybe take them through the photographs and we can talk about this, this will be, uh, to maybe uh, answer that question by talking about these photographs and uh, if you have any a couple of questions, then we'll get right to your, the answer to your question, Mr. Leader. Um, are you familiar with these photographs?
Yes.
Do you know who took them? Who took them? You did. Uh, around when were these photographs taken?
The past two years.
Within the past two years. So these are just a collection of photos um, throughout your operations. Um, and so A eight is the one to our left, looking at them. Um, can you just kind of describe what we see in those photographs?
Sure, so the boy with the flowers in the top left behind him, you'll see a small wooden table. Um, the girl below her is in the construction zone where we have some vests and shovels that you can't see pictured. Um, the girl in the big mud pit, we have a hole that often fills up with mud and the children love it, so that's our mud hole. The boy in the dragon rain suit is at the mud kitchen. The girl below is um, sitting on a bench. The girl to the right is in our construction zone with her goggles on, and then that other boy is hanging in the nets.
And the photographs on A nine, um, we have six photographs. Um, you want to just give just a quick rundown of what we see in there?
Sure, so at the beginning of our younger classes, you see the girl with the feathers behind her, we might do a craft or some sort of activity together, so you can see we were hanging feathers that day. The boy below is enjoying the mud. Um, the boy to the right is in the snow and then the one above actually lives on the parterav right next to our site and he is pumping water down one of our ramps.
Now, that ramp that I see there, is that, is that fixed into the ground with boorderings or is that just a piece of?
Yeah, like I, I carried it.
Okay. Um, and does this accurately depict the nature of what is found within the fenced area? Is there anything more substantial inside than what we see?
I say the heaviest thing is the mud kitchen, but it's movable.
And that's not?
No, it's just anything.
You know, footing, it's not footing it into the ground, okay. There's two fenced areas. You run one class at a time, right?
Yeah, correct. Yes, we come in and we gather at the first area around the benches, do a warm-up and then we head to the second side where uh, almost all these pictures are on that second side.
Is this play or is it, is there an educational component to it?
So play actually is a huge part of education, so it kind of goes together. Um, they're described as outdoor play classes, but for children, play is education, so that's the whole um, like mission behind what we're doing.
So when you say play, are are you trying to 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 get kids to get along with each other? I mean, what are you trying to accomplish with which you play there?
Sure, so through play, kids learn, like, how to get along, how to follow directions, they have, um, they learn sensory integration, fine motor skills, gross motor skills, um, emotional well-being. So when you come to Sticks and Sprouts, your child is learning on, on all those things.
I have a site plan question. Uh, on this photograph, I don't know what the intended is. Uh, there's signage there, is that, was that, is that all within our guidelines for signage, was it approved, was there, whether it's permitted or will be permitted?
So I didn't get a permit, there was, those posts were always there and the signage used to say community garden and I had permission to put up the sign that now says Sticks and Sprouts.
I I I want to, I want to make this a question. I'm going to stipulate that every kid on those pictures has a smiling face and that the mission that you have is a worthy mission. I want to understand what the site plan requirements are of this board with regard to the operation. To the extent that there is state regulatory, county regulatory, health department regulatory, I'm going to leave all that for them, right? I want to understand with regard to the site plan issues alone. An operation that apparently can exist and is permitted to do walks through the woods, moves inside of a fenced area, now we're looking at a site plan. What exactly does Fairhaven's ordinances require of this? Exactly where do we need to deviate from standards? Let's focus on the the issues that are problematic that get us here.
I can get right into that if uh, you'd like.
Look, we can get back into whether or not there was a kid that was upset once, but I don't think that we need to.
We're just laying a a groundwork for general welfare and important things like that, but I can get into the site specifics.
We can come back to this. I'm just, I'm just suggesting to you that understanding that there's no licenses at issue and that this operation is entirely legal, which by the way, the qualifier, that to the best of our knowledge, any resolution of approval is going to be explicit with regard to what we're doing. Um, and fences in town, they get replaced with permits. Signs go up, they go up with permits. You contacted the town with regard to walking through the woods, I give you credit for that. But the 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 process, the process is going to be in the foundation. But but where are we at variance with what's required? I know that you need general site plan approval, but where are we deviating from standards? I'm surprised that you have no access to bathroom. Uh, I am also surprised that at times you have twenty parents here in a parking lot that has barely twenty spaces. And we have a nursery school here, my kids went to Meadowflower too, we provide for you, forty spaces. Well, do you know, you got three different users of this site?
That's, that's true.
But how many of those forty spaces are used by other users?
At the same time? Is there any coincidence with Meadowflowers classes in your?
Mr. Sadi, we don't do it that way, you know that. With regard to the use of parking spaces, we allocate them for a particular use.
True.
Uh, if you can show me a lease and we can talk about what she's specifically limited to do, but apparently you haven't seen the lease, which frankly, I I I don't understand. But nevertheless, let's talk about what fence means, let's talk about what a site plan means in Fairhaven, and let's talk about where this board is being asked to deviate from the standards that do apply.
The only standard that we're deviating from is parking. Um, and to get. For more since the use variance, correct? Yeah. We should just say that first. And then moving into the site plan from there. The main thing they're looking at is, is parking, correct? Correct. So the question about where are we deviating from with respect to the site plan, we're we're only deviating as it relates to parking, the number of spaces. So I can provide a little testimony from Miss McQ to allow us to establish the number of parking spaces that would be required. And then you'll hear testimony about why we think uh, a variance is justified.
With with the use now?
For the use variance and for associated parking variance.
Okay. Do you there?
Shall I?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so Emily, at at some point, were you asked to go inside the church and count the number of chairs?
Yes.
And um, and did you do that?
I did.
And what did you?
A hundred and twenty-seven chairs.
A hundred and twenty-seven chairs, and those are a hundred and twenty-seven chairs that were set up?
Set up, they are removable.
Okay, what kind of chairs are they?
Um, kind of the one I'm sitting.
Okay. Um, and were there any other chairs that you observed?
No.
Just a hundred and twenty-seven?
Correct.
Was there fourteen more? I'm sorry. I I may have, I may have told you that there were.
I, so I think fourteen of the one twenty-seven were against the wall, kind of like extra chairs, that's what.
Start with the two.
Yes.
Okay, and you testified that only one class goes on at the, at 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 a given time, correct? Um, uh, Mr. Rizzo, did you agree with my suggestion that this was um, like a classroom uh, use and? I I do, so to your point, um, as Chair and and Board members, there's obviously no designated use in the parking ordinance for Sticks and Sprouts, so I worked in this society here and we, we combined a few sections um, and parking ordinance to to come up with a number. Um, the first one is for church and synagogue. That is either one parking space per three seats or twenty-two inches of
Pew.
Of pew, that's correct. In this case, we're being told that there's seats in the church, uh, hundred and twenty-seven seats. Uh, I originally had forty-seven spaces associated, I don't know what the the new math is.
It's uh, one per three. I don't know what the new math is.
So that's, it's forty-three spaces. So the church itself is going to require forty-three spaces. The next use um, is Sticks and Sprouts, which there's a few uses that are similar. There's a community center, community club, meeting rooms, assembly, studio and then schools. So we took what I think is probably a conservative approach with schools. Um, and it's two spaces per classroom. Um, but not less than one per teacher uh, and staff, so I think you said three teachers.
Um, but not less than one per teacher um and staff, so I think you said three teachers originally, it sounds like it's one.
There's, for our drop off classes, we have three teachers, but that's like the most we have.
But in addition to you?
Including me.
So that's, that's three, honestly, hearing your testimony, it sounds like that's a lot less than probably gonna be considering there's.
For the caregiver classes, the the caregivers stay, and so each one of those caregivers drove. You know, you could imagine a car per caregiver.
Twenty, twenty two?
And there are forty spaces.
So by math, by that math, that's forty three for the church and three for this use, forty six. Um, I think we probably need to reevaluate now that we know that there's potentially twenty vehicles here at a given time.
So we we talked about that, what about the nursery?
The nursery school is a drop off. Uh, I mean, that that's not a caregiver situation, so.
And they also have teachers, right? Jen couldn't be here tonight who runs Meadowflower, um, but we we talk all the time and like I said, there's never been a lack of parking for for the preschool or for us.
But do we know what their parking requirement, but let's put the point that I think the chair is making, do we know what their parking need is? Cause we're only talking about one parking.
Well, there's school, then they need a parking spot for teachers.
And a certain number per classroom. And one per teacher.
And just so the record is clear, to Mr. Rizzo, where there is not a specific definition for some, for parking within our. The board has the ability, as you've done, to select what they believe is appropriate for the county, correct?
Correct, and this will cue you also, cause I. Actually, I mentioned before, I am over the field, Sperry then feels almost every day with my dog around the time your school starts. Uh, you also overflow in public parking, which is the entrance on.
With the gravel lots, correct, yeah, so people will park there as well.
Yes, which I need to get there before drop off, so I can park. My own issues.
That would be, it's when you come off the bridge and you have the um. The nature area on the side and you have the back business and this end of the back.
Oh, okay, the soccer field.
So, but but I'm gonna make sure I understand what you just said, because my kids went to Meadowflower before Sticks and Sprouts apparently. You're telling me that in the morning, that when you go to walk your dog, if you go at the wrong time, every single one of these spaces is.
No, I would have to park further up towards ridge, but there is an overflow that comes in, and I'm not saying it's directly that. It also could be from the nursery school.
So it's when you come up from, oh, I know where you're.
The side.
The side.
The point is, it's already an issue.
You're pointing out there's access to parking along the road, that that's all you're saying?
There's, there's, that's a lot, the public lot. On the east end of the Fairhaven Fields, between the nature area, there is a road. And if, as you're driving in, there is a gravel lot.
So there's two different kinds of discussions, Mr. Sull. There's the discussion about what the practical requirements are of this operation as it is. That gets us into things such as, we have classes where up to twenty parents are here bringing twenty points. Then there is the technical requirements of the site. To the extent that we are trying to delve into what is technically required, offsite parking on public property as Mr. Cancel has referenced is irrelevant. If we wanna talk about that being generally around, that's one thing, I misunderstood whether or not that access was actually necessary because this was flawed. But since we started, can we finish the idea of what's technically required of the, I'm calling it three uses?
Jordan, do you know, I I don't have the information on the nursery schools, how many classrooms they have, um, so.
The whole idea of people having to be sworn in before they can make comments or ask questions, people understand that through?
I I I I will, but I don't think everybody's, we will, when we open to the public, they will come up.
I, they don't seem to understand, but we're not.
So, we're we're not open to public yet, when you want to make comments, we will call you up, we will swear you in, you will have your name put on the record. Right now, this is a presentation from the applicant and the applicant's professionals who have been sworn. Thank you.
There are four classrooms in Meadowflower.
So the three uses, we don't have that information.
Well, you just heard four classrooms in Meadowflower?
Or eight and then six and then four.
I just made up the eight, cause I've been in there, I I, I'm surprised it's only four, but I don't know how many admin offices. You're not in a position to tell us how many parking spaces are required for the other two users of the site, is my understanding. There's only one other user in the site. Who's that?
The nursery school.
There's a church.
There's a church, well, yeah, we just talked about the church.
Okay. Same thing. Okay, so so let's take the church, how many spaces are in the apartment? Forty, and how many spaces are required for the church?
Forty three.
Okay, well. So we're three short technically on the church, and I understand that there's not a lot of people going to that church, I get, I live here too. Do you or do you not know how many parking spaces are required for the nursery school?
What's the standard on the nursery school? It's two per classroom?
And elementary school or?
What's a nursery school?
It's one per two hundred square feet.
One space per two hundred square feet? So I don't have a square foot calculation for nursery school, but it's one space per two hundred square feet.
Okay, and with regard to the church analysis, the only requirement for the building used as a church tied to the pews and the chairs. You agree with that, Mr. Rizzo?
Yes.
So the rest of this building doesn't require any parking spaces.
Correct.
They have one sanctuary.
They have, they have what?
They have one sanctuary.
Yeah.
That's, we're assessing seats in a sanctuary.
Yeah.
Okay, and with regard to the, to the nursery school, we know what the standard is, but we don't know what's required. Right? Cause we don't know the square foot, and we also don't know the teachers, we talked about how many be required for teachers at school, so I didn't know how we just flipped over to two hundred square feet.
So there's, there's elementary, intermediate and secondary schools. Um, my original understanding of the project was that there would be three instructors, so I thought, based on a number of instructors would be the closest representation. But now hearing the testimony, hearing that there's upwards of twenty parents at a given time. For the, for this, for the the subject.
I just wanna clarify, there are two distinct discussions. There's the technical requirements, which is why we're here, we do technical. Then there are the arguments with regard to why the deviations are okay. I don't wanna have the arguments about why the deviations are okay overcome getting the basic facts on the record. Based on the sanctuary, there's three parking spaces short based on what you have. The nursery school requires calculations and data which we do not have, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's an additional parking load on this particular parking lot, but we don't know what that number is.
Not the exact number, but we're hearing, we're hearing one space per two hundred feet. We could probably estimate it with a pretty good degree of certainty.
What's that number?
Well, how how many square feet is the church?
Yes, yeah. Uh, they all, they have like a half of a building. They have a upper and a lower, two bottoms on each.
I think we're really far afield of getting anything that would be reliable. I think that you should concede that you don't know the answer and you can move on to the next thing. Well, I mean, your engineer is trying to figure that out right now, it's two stories. Right?
Yeah. I haven't been inside the nursery school.
It's two stories. It's two stories.
Yeah.
So roughly thirty five hundred square feet. That would be seventeen and eighteen spaces.
So they have half the building. And uh, and the church offices and a big hallway.
So Ms. McQ, I assume you've been in there many times?
Uh, the nursery or the church?
Meadowflower.
Uh, once. I don't go in there often.
Where are the bathrooms? You don't get in the building for the bathroom?
I personally use the bathroom, but there's a side door that goes right into the non Meadowflower part of the church.
Or in the back?
Yeah, uh, correct, yeah, by the fields, I mean by the trees.
Uh, so you said there were four classrooms? Minus three with regard to the sanctuary. Something that gets us to eighteen, so we're minus twenty one. Let's get back to whether or not. You have a number with regard to what's, what should be considered with regard to what disuse requires of that parking. What 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 did you, what did you estimate going in tonight, coming into night?
Going in, I estimated um. A minimum of two per classroom, but one per teacher, with three teachers, that would be three spaces.
Okay, for the inside of the fence area.
Correct.
Right, for the third user, and based on what we talked about tonight so far with regard to the, the parent, the parent. Class, caregiver class, what 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 do you think that reasonable estimate is then?
I think um a better representation, probably the studio for art, music, dance, gymnastics. That's also two hundred square feet per space. Um, fenced area is roughly over five thousand square feet. Um, so that's about twenty six spaces and change, um, I think that's a lot more, a better representation based on how many teachers and parents are gonna be there.
If we're trying to figure it out, some parents aren't gonna be driving, um, that period is a limited amount of time, but whether it's twenty six or. Twenty or eighteen, I I think we all can understand that at a certain time, you're requiring spaces that are about that, about that amount. Okay? When you talked with regard to the parking, what you explained to us is that effectively you are. Scheduling around activities, you're scheduling around church activities, you're scheduling around. Uh, days that you know to be busy at the ball fields, is there anything in particular that you do? In order to identify what those busy days are at Fairhaven Fields?
Uh, so I barely rarely run weekend um classes, but like I know, right, baseball, our little league opening is this. Saturday, right, right, so I wouldn't be running any classes.
Do you do birthday parties or anything like that?
I do birthday parties on occasion, yeah.
Are those on the weekends or weekdays?
Uh, weekends.
Have you had a situation where there is no parking available in apartment?
Have I had it? No, because with the public parking, the gravel lots, a lot of our families will park there and then walk down. And the church also has in front of the church, you're allowed to park, there's a big circle. Um, I don't know the number of cars that can fit there, but roughly fifteen could fit around the front of the church in the circle as well, but still room to pass.
It's it's considerable, when you get probably.
This area here, from Ridge Road to the certain.
It could be, it could be fifteen, it could be twenty.
And then there's also parking on the other side, but I thought it was split, this is a community garden there.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is the master's house, that's part of church.
But that's just accurate.
Okay, so Mr. Asai. In in order for the board to approve the application for it tonight, we need to grant a deviation from the parking requirements. We've, we've used the discussion to get to an analysis of what the parking requirements are. The testimony has been that there is not a problem because of the both the timing and the coordination. That's used by the applicant scheduling their classes and the overflow parking that's available in various areas nearby, right?
That's right.
Okay, let's next.
So we're gonna move on to some different site related issues.
Okay.
Okay, um. Is there any lighting being proposed?
No.
No, is there any lighting along the fenced area now?
No.
Uh, do you ever conduct any activities after the sun goes down?
We had run classes when the sun was going down, we had twinkle lights up and some movable spotlights, uh, but all that, so we know that.
Okay. Um, are there any utilities being provided or currently provided or proposed to be provided to the fenced area? Is there any garbage ever generated from the use since so, how do you deal with that?
So I bring it home or I put it into the church garbage cans and we probably generate one bag every three to four weeks. It's very general. Do I, I have my own garbage can there, and then the church also has two garbage cans, but I mean, it's one bag every three to four weeks and sometimes I just throw it in my truck and all.
I assume your kids that are in diapers?
I don't have kids.
You, you don't get that far.
Um, yeah, there's kids in diapers.
So where, where you, wh- wh- where do you change your diapers?
Uh, they, they'll, well, they'll do it at their car, it's typically, there's never been a diaper changing class that I can recall. Or they'll use the public um park bathroom, and that's maybe one person every two classes or so, I'd say, that walk over there. But it's only a forty five minute class, so.
What bathroom do your kids use?
Uh, they'll either go to their car and they have um squatty potties, or they go to the park batteries.
So, Mr. Asai, you know, from time to time, when we're speaking to users of property, we we talk about. How the property is being used specifically with details. Is the, is the proposal tonight to create some sort of parameters? Not only around what's currently being done, but around what the limits of what will be done in the future?
Yeah, that's one of the objectives tonight, um, you've heard testimony that. Sticks and sprouts activities don't take place while church services are going on. Um, partially for parking and, you know, and and other reasons. Um, that these activities, uh, you do propose to do some night activities at certain times of year, is that correct?
So we did that for the first time this year for four weeks, but.
Okay, and when you do it, it's, what's, tell, tell me more about that.
Sure, so the sun probably went down the last twenty minutes of class or so, so we had headlamps and the lights up at the site and the spotlights. Um, and.
Does the uh church site itself have lighting?
There is one light in that apartment.
Is it adequate to see if we get out once that night class is open?
I would say so, it would never add any.
And you can, you can see?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm I'm struggling, I I'm struggling with the answer to the question. If, I I think the testimony was that you'd explain the the types and and numbers of classes that you're running now. You've explained kind of some, some times where you've done things at night. I I'm wondering what, what proposal there is to understand what the impact of this use is. Both as it is represented here tonight and if it became five times the intensity. Is there, is there a proposal to say, this is what we wanna do, we're doing three classes, no more a day, we're doing. Only, I think you testified Monday, Wednesday, Friday and an occasional weekend, are you constraining it? Or or are you asking effectively for the site to be approved for this use with. Without any constraints, because all the facts are relevant to the way it's working today. So, you know, I I know it's kind of silly that the kids go to the car and they do squatty potties and stuff, but it. It it it's, it's not really the way. I would imagine that this could be done, a little bit here and there, okay, but like, like as we're starting to add classes and as we're doing things, it changes it. And so I just wanna understand, I'm not putting that on you, I'm asking you whether or not you're presenting it as some sort of a, an okay. To do it as it's being done.
Sure, so let me, let me ask the question um in a way so that you answer it, you know, the way you wanna answer it. If you were to tell the board, we're only going to be open three days a week and the board were to approve you. If you try to open four days a week, you're stuck with the three day. So, I think what the question is getting at is um about the intensity of. How you foresee your operation going in the future. Um, will it go seven days a week, will it go all day long, seven days a week, can you discuss those intentions of the board?
Sure, so each semester, we change the days that classes run depending on demand from the clients. Um, so we have run classes on Monday, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, right now, we're Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays, we always do occasional weekends. Um, so I would love to keep that open, but I I'm never going to run more than one class, there's never gonna be more than that max of twenty two children there at a time.
What is the space between classes in a day? Does one class end at one and the next class starts at one?
Uh, there's a half an hour between those classes with eighteen to twenty two students, so there's a half an hour in between where everyone leaves and then the next.
And how many per day?
Uh, right now, three.
And what time is it? I know one's at nine.
So, uh, it depends, so right now, Wednesdays, we have a nine thirty and a ten forty five. Thursdays are nine, ten, fifteen and eleven. And eleven-thirty and then our two drop-off classes in the afternoon on a Thursday, so that's five, but that's a different type of class. Fridays, we have a nine-thirty AM and a ten-forty.
There's a tremendous variability in your schedule. How do you communicate?
How do I communicate with? Through email. So when they, when they register for a semester, as we call them, it shows the dates and the times. They know exactly what they're signing up for.
And when they sign up, are they, they're, they're not just signing up for a one-off, one-day activity, you call it a semester. How exactly does that work?
Majority of people that come to class sign up for, if we're running a six-week semester, they'll sign up for all six weeks. We do offer drop-in as well, so we have, we will have people who can only make it to one class in those six weeks. Majority of people come for the whole semester.
Mr. Asadi, it's very clear to me that the applicant is sensitive to the intensity of the uses around him. And that the testimony is clearly intended to help the board understand why it works. I did not find the explanation of when the classes were to be clear to me, and my concern is that an approval. Is either an approval. And there's no constraints, th- this, there's no regulations that I even understand. So I, I don't know what would stop the applicant and, and, and I'm not interested. In, in putting some cap on her ability to be successful. What I'm interested in is somehow trying to understand how those conflicts will continuously be avoided. And I recognize that informality is working for now, but it's very difficult for a board that is as formal as we are. Because our resolutions, all the way back to nineteen ninety-three, eventually come back to future boards to interpret. How is it that we make sure that the proposal? Reasonable, avoiding conflicts, remains reasonable and avoids conflicts?
Well, we could agree to conditions that there would be a half an hour space between classes and by doing that. You ensure the outgoing people have left before the incoming people have arrived.
Yeah.
And we could agree to a condition that um the classes would not take place during church services.
What, what about the metal flower classes? I mean, you've never had a conflict with a metal flower class, drop-off, pick-up, it can be pretty chaotic.
Correct, and like a K G will do Olympics or like a Halloween parade and I'll get an email about it and I make sure all my parents know, so there's. Never been an issue with metal flower.
So obviously we would also probably condition that classes do not take place during the time when metal flowers happen.
Is that, is that compatible with? So the question, the question.
Really condition that, that you don't activate during church services. I, I mean, for me, the church service is secondary. It's really the metal flower is more intense use than, than churches. Uh given the days that you.
Do you operate at the same time as the nursery school ever?
Uh yes.
You do, and, and when, so tell us about those days.
So do, metal flower also has varying start times, so they have like an eight-thirty drop-off some days and nine o'clock, sometimes eleven o'clock pickup, some kids stay until twelve-thirty. So sometimes um during drop-off, my class might start fifteen minutes later and there's still a few of metal flower, you know, parents in the parking lot.
That parking lot gets pretty full for metal flower, and you're saying that you never have that. That caregiver class while the metal flower drop-off pick-up is.
I do, but there's never a lack of parking, so if, if that, if there's a lot of metal flower.
Twenty spaces out of forty there and there's no problem with the metal.
So there are a lot of metal flower parents dropping off. My parents will park up in the public parking gravel lots.
So. We've talked about the parking, but we haven't talked about the way this site works in reality, and I assume everybody here. Is from Berry Haven and everybody knows that this is both a parking lot and a road. Anyone who's had their kids in Meta Flower know that those kids come out of that building, go into that striped area. They walk into a very specific gate and they do not cross that parking area. As I'm understanding your operation, your kids are doing different things and going to different places. The conflict of all that stuff happening is a serious concern coming into the, in the meeting tonight. A way to avoid a conflict is my times will not conflict with drop-off or pick-up at Meta Flower. Which is a set time for a, for a particular semester. It, it won't conflict with. I, I, I don't know how to do it frankly, because the way you're doing it now is informal and I get it. But I, I, I'm, I'm struggling with how to make sure that it isn't as much parking that I'm concerned about. You don't even come close to meeting the parking requirements. But, but it's, you. All those little kids have to move around it. And as much as there are signs that say that this is not a drive-through and it's not a road, it's a road. And while all of us have read that sign, all of us use it as a road. And so kids are little and, and I'm just trying to understand where they are and how we're keeping them safe. It's the number one issue. So this is really important. We have to come up with, with something that we can keep it. As it is and avoid those conflicts, but in writing.
So there is a gravel path from the gravel lot, so they can avoid the lot, totally, totally. And so they can walk the gravel path that goes along the tennis courts and then there's an opening right next to Sticks and Sprouts, so they would, they'd pop in right where mine.
But if, if twenty of the spots here are in the middle of that parking lot. And, and people are driving through as they do and as they will. Your kids and their parents have to cross. That area that people are driving through, whether they're allowed to or not. I think that's the concern. There's not a gravel path. From your fence to that center of the, of the parking lot with the majority of parking.
It's how almost every school operates, right? You have to park and then walk your child to the school entrance or in this case, the Sticks and Sprouts.
I've done it a lot.
Yeah.
It's, it's in the past, but I used to park and I don't like that parking lot. To get to Meadow Flank. To get to you is the same and we don't take the kids or we didn't take the kids directly to the player. The issue is the number of cars, the number of kids and the ability to keep it managed. And so that's the reason why it matters to me. I don't know what everybody else thinks with regard to the intensity of the use of the parking lot while you're there with kids.
Right, to her point, I think you run into that everywhere. My son and two daughters and a shoe, a shoe break, hitting balls. And it was parking lot, but it was separate and cars would fly through there. When I, I don't know the name of the other daycare center in town, which is across the street from the case, Boosco Do. That parking lot, I'm trying to drive through it. Yeah, a few times that I stopped to get a coffee or something in the park over Boosco Do, I run over to Boosco Do. I mean, it, it acts just the nature of the beast. Unless you have a private parking lot, which I don't think anyone really does, even. Picking my son up at Holy Cross, which is a private parking, parking.
Yes, that's true. Well, well, hold on. You're talking about a site that has no restroom facilities. And you're talking about a site that actively moves beyond the fence to other areas that are public spaces. You, you can be comfortable with the idea that it's gonna work itself out. That's fine. But to the extent that the testimony is, it's working because I'm not conflicting with this, I'm not conflicting with that. That doesn't go into a resolution, it can't be, it's not enforceable. To the extent that you want the board to understand that that's what's gonna happen, I'm trying to understand parameters. It sounds like Mr. Cancel may well be okay. To the extent that.
It's, I, I'm just saying, it, it is a reality, I think, everywhere you go, and even as I just said, private parking lot, Holy Cross. I mean, it, it gets hairy in there sometimes and we're, we're falling out into the street. The other thing I would like to ask is I've noticed, how many? You know what, I'm not even gonna bring it up because we're gonna get somewhere else, but.
Hold on, hold on. I, I have a question for you, you know, it, you seem like you have things pretty well organized. Who's your backup? Who, who steps in if you're not there?
I cancel class. I think I've had one sick day in two years, so, um but it's just, it's me.
I, I noticed on the site line that there's a dwelling there. Is that part of the church? Is that a private house?
That's the pastor's house, it's part of the church property.
But, but don't you want a situation where this thing can, can survive you? I mean, if, if, you know, Dr. Bitch, you know, you get sick or something like that and you're not there. Uh who covers it?
I don't know what would happen if I got, I mean, if I was injured, I wouldn't run classes. Um. The caregivers are all there, so if I were to, you know, get hurt during a class, all the parents are there with their children and then during the drop-off class, I have two other teachers with me. So.
You're just asking long term.
I think you're saying the business continuity is that when you look for someone or places, you even scale.
She is, you, you are the, you are the business, but you know, I, I'm just. Excuse me, you, we can't, we can't approve variance to uh. You know, that, that doesn't, doesn't look a little bit past you.
How is that different from any other silver priority? Oh yeah, really?
I, I'll, I'll tell you what, but, but let's just put a pit in that. Let's. Quick question, the, the, the permitting from Berry Haven or RAB?
Part, the Parks and Rec Department.
Parks and Rec Department. You still get those permits?
I have one right now.
So is it an ongoing permit or is it a daily permit?
Every semester I submit a, the, it's the same paperwork every time, but whatever the class time is, I write it down, I send it to. The Parks and Rec Department, they approve it. At the end of the semester, I send in a check and then I send in new dates for my next semester.
So that's, that's the kind of thing I'm looking for. So when, when they get it, are they looking for conflicts? Are they avoiding you scheduling something when the baseball opening day is, for example?
So uh yeah, so on my last permit, I needed, um I was adding a, a Friday class and I contacted the Park and Recs Department and they said we have someone else in. Using the trails that day. Um how many kids will you have? And I said six and they said, go ahead. So they are checking for concepts.
Okay.
Actually, I, from rugby, I know that they, we have very specific weekends that we can use and very specific weekends we can't use based on. Usage of the deals.
So Parks and Recs control certain things with regard to whether Peninsula is gonna play there, whether or not they're scheduled. Rec games and, and, and all that kind of stuff. The church has a schedule that's, that's, you know. But then the church allows the Boy Scouts to be there for the Pine Wind Derby and then randomly out of nowhere, we wind up with thirty cars in the parking lot that day. Uh those are the conflicts that, that I'm interested in understanding, but I'm gonna put that to the side. Mr. Asadi, I want to point out that it is uh nine-forty. Um you know, we have about an hour left. Um I don't like when people come out to a meeting and don't get a chance to speak, and so I don't know. Exactly where we're going from here, but I want to leave enough time. I, I suspect I know what, what a lot of people want to convey and, and. But I want them to be able to do that concisely, so I, I don't want to run out of time for that. Uh it would also be great to, to be able to try and get done, so where are we?
If, well, I mean, unless, I mean, the board has asked a lot of very good questions and uh. I'm finished with the questions that I was planning to ask this witness. We have a professional planner here. Who tells me he has a brief amount of testimony. Um probably with fewer questions, uh but I don't know that. Um and obviously the people in the crowd. Um if we could maybe allot about ten to fifteen minutes so that Mr. Higgins can testify. Um lay down the professional planning testimony and perhaps there would be plenty of time left for all the people who attended tonight.
Okay, so we have a sense of what we have for time, so go where you want to go next.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah, I assume that, I think that they both want to.
Nice question about the site plan with respect that the rain angle.
Sure.
And Mr. Red, I don't know, have you been out to the site after a rainfall? So, Mr. Chair, I know you said you cancel if there's uh below twenty degrees. Do you cancel for heavy rains?
Yeah, so we cancel for flooding, so.
Okay.
Or like the uh when wind speeds are above a. Certain speed, we can't.
And that's conveyed to the parents, we email, we got two inches of rain, the site's.
People in text, just to make sure they all get it.
And did you do any grading work for the site when you took over the, the lease?
I had the soil tested, but.
Okay. You know, I, I've walked past a few times, I know that it will flood pretty considerably out there, uh heavy rains. I know mine is part of the business layer. But just curious how it works with, that with respect to the site. Okay, I can tell you. Next witness? Okay, Mr. Higgins? Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, Mr. Higgins, you were sworn in, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, can you enlighten the board as to your education experience licenses?
First to the record, my name is James Higgins, H I G G I N S. I am a licensed professional planner. I've been licensed for approximately forty-five years. I have been recognized by this board in the past. As an expert in the field of planning. I've been recognized by superior courts in five counties in the state. And by the state Supreme Court as an expert in the field of planning. And I've been a tangible ocean planner for approximately the last forty years.
Like to offer Mr. Higgins as an expert.
Any questions about Mr. Higgins credentials?
No.
You are, you are a licensed planner in the state.
My license and my license is current.
Do you have any other uh um licenses outside of planning?
No, I don't. I was licensed as a landscape architect, but I let that lapse.
We accept.
Thank you. Um Mr. Higgins, did you perform a study uh in, in connection with this application to whether or not the use variance being applied for is justified?
Yes, I, I looked at the application, I uh looked at the ordinance, I visited the site, I visited the site during. One of the more intensive uh class, classes with had the parents and, and guardians with the children. I was today. Uh there were approximately twenty there at the site. Twenty, twenty parents and children there at the site today when I visited there. And I was also there during the period when the, between. Two sessions noticed that the pa- the parents did leave completely and that the parking was absolutely. Almost totally empty before the next class came in.
What time of day was it?
That was this morning. That was this morning and I was there at nine-thirty. When the, and I think nine-forty-five is when the class let out and then the next class was gonna start at, at ten-fifteen. Um the site. Uh I'm sure the board members are all familiar with the site. It's, look, it's, it's occupied by the church and also occupied by the daycare facility and there's a telecommunications standard on it. Um the portion, portion to be occupied by this use is a small testing portion of the site. And to one side of it, you have an active municipal park. To the other side, you have the daycare playground. To the south, you have the parking lot, to the church, and to the north, you have the, the pastor's residence of the church. Uh the overall, the site is surrounded on three sides by public park, parkland. And on the fourth side, there's a small section where there's some residences. When I looked at this, I do think there are special reasons for the granite variance. Uh first of all, uh the, the real standard in this case is whether or not the general welfare is advanced due to the particular suitability. Of the site for the use and I think the general welfare itself is advanced by the nature of the use, which provides for. A uh emotional, educational and, and outdoor experience that, as the applicant has said. Affects the emotional well-being of the children that are involved. It encourages outdoor activity and environmental stewardship among the youths. So I think there's a definite benefit there. In addition, it's a recreational use and recreational uses are considered also to be beneficial. And again, not to confuse this, I don't think this rises to the level of being inherently beneficial. Which is definitely a beneficial use. And then when you look at the fact that the site is particularly suited for the use. In that, first of all, it's at a church. And while this use is not technically a daycare use, it has many of the attributes of daycare, including a recre-. Outdoor recreational use and daycare uses are typically associated with churches as, as with this church you do on a nursery school. At the church. Uh and there are many other churches that also have daycare type uses. And many other, many churches also have recreational uses associated with them that are not directly related. To the church operation, but do function as a accessory use in association with the church operation. So I think having a, having this use on the site is beneficial. You got surrounding uses and uses on the site that are compatible with, with the use that's being proposed. So I think the general welfare is advanced due to the particular suitability of the site for the use. In addition, I think it's important to note that there are, is no need for permanent structures. Associated with this use on the site. You do have the, the two sheds that are there that are used in part, but they're not permanent structures. And there's no need for any impervious surfaces to be constructed on the site for this use either. Everything is pervious. So when I look at that, I really think the site is particularly suited for the use. Uh when I look at the zoning of the site, the zoning of the site is R forty. And in fact, the church site is the only site in the zone. So uh to R forty residential zone, the only use for this, this R forty zone is the church itself. Uh so that I don't think by having this use, which is essentially. An accessory type of use to the church as well. It's not, not functionally related to the church. It's the type of use that would be considered accessory. To the, to the church. So I think it's not a conflict with. So I think it's not a conflict with your zoning ordinance. Um it's a unique use that when the governing body was was uh developing the ordinance would not have considered. I, when I heard about this, I I have never in my forty-five years heard of a use such as this. It is unique, it does again has some aspects of what would be a daycare and childcare facility, but it is not a daycare or child care facility. It's very short term and it's strictly outdoor recreation and education. Uh so I don't think there's any substantial impact on your zone plan or your zoning ordinance. I don't think there's any substantial impact on surrounding properties. Particularly this portion of the site is completely isolated from surrounding uses. It's it's within the, it's in the site, it's adjacent to an active recreational use, public recreational use. So I don't think there's any substantial impact on the surrounding properties. Uh when I look at all this, I really think that this, there is special reasons for the granting of the variants. I think the general welfare is advanced due to the particular suitability of the site. And there is no substantial negative impact to either your zone plan or surrounding properties.
Is is metal flower in a different zone?
What's that?
Is metal flower in a different?
No, metal flowers is on the church site.
Well, what's the difference between between what this is accomplishing and what metal flowers accomplishes? And why is there a need for a use variance?
What? There's, it's not so much a need, well, there's a need for for this use. And if you have a question about the need for these, I think you need to look behind it. There's all these people. There's the particular suitability of the site advances the general welfare.
I I understand. Is your question, why was a use variance required for this application?
Why why is this different than metal flower?
We're not.
It's not that different. It's it's not, it isn't that different than metal flowers, but it's a new use that's being added to the site. And while it's, I think it fits your definition accessory use in your ordinance. The land way the land use law is uh is structured. Well, I'm sorry, I apologize if I misunderstood your initial question. But the way the land use law is structured, it doesn't say you need a E variance for a principal use and a principal structure. It says, if you if you provide propose a use, a use that's not permitted, that could be principal or accessory or a principal structure. Then you need a D one variant. So because this is an accessory use, but it's not specifically permitted and it's a new use that's being added to the site, you would need the D one variant.
You keep saying accessory, but it's not actually accessory to the church. It's totally a benefit.
You have to.
You're saying it's functioning like an accessory.
Uh what I'm saying is when you read your definition of accessory use in the ordinance, this is an accessory use. And I I can explain that to you.
Did metal flower get a D variance?
I have no idea.
I don't think, I don't think.
I I I researched the entire zoning file and I didn't find anything on metal flower.
Dr. LaFer, I want to make sure that you have a clear answer to your question. Metal flower is a nursery school and metal flower has a playground. The playground is used by the nursery school during certain times of the day. They have a structure inside the building where they use the exterior of the building as part of it. This is independent in terms of the entity, the operation, the business from metal flower and the church. And they are independent of all of those improvements. They only exist within the fenced area and then outside of the fenced area with a permit from the borough.
And and a further distinction is that metal flower is licensed, therefore it falls under the category of being an inherent and beneficial use. And this use is not licensed, so it doesn't fall under that category.
That's what I was getting.
But that's it's it's I think it's a technical use variance, but it is.
Thank you for that clarification. I think what I understand with the inherent in inherent.
Inherently beneficial use is a use that by its very nature advances the general welfare and it rises to the level of being, that is a special reason in and of itself.
Thank.
You don't have to provide a particular suitability.
So that establishes a portion of the criteria needed to be established in order to grant a variance.
That's right.
Right.
But we don't, this is the the applicant's use is not an inherent.
So I I know that you have probably some planning things to talk about. And perhaps while Mr. Higgins is 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 at the the table desk thing, you can run through the things that you were uh thinking before you came in and maybe kind of what you're thinking now uh at this point.
Uh Donna Miller, for the record, um so I I agree with Mr. Higgins' testimony. Uh I have been curious to understand better, again, now that I have the testimony of the applicant. How does this use, like what is this use? How does it, how is it distinguished from metal flowers? How is it distinguished from what we would normally consider, you know, these other um types of community um uses that occur within church facilities? And so it it is distinctly different. It is not, as we've said, an entity of the of the church. An entity of metal flowers. Um it's not actually a school, at least as far as the state's licensing concerns. Um I almost feel like, you know, in in the table of uses, we we permit rural parks and playgrounds as principal uses in the R forty. And that presumes, again, this governmental activity. And what Sticks and Sprouts actually started out is a private um operation of events in in a public playground and park. She was using the trail to do some of these activities in an organized fashion, much in the same way. You know, scouts or or the other organizations would get an occasional event permit, right, to use a playground.
Right.
So, you know, it it's true, and we we don't really have a classification in the ordinance that we can put this neatly into a box and say, yeah, it is this. And its parking requirement is X, and we can quantify all of those negatives. So um it's tricky, but uh you know, and again, hearing the concerns of the board. Um you know, I agree there, there are issues with this overlapping of the parking and making sure that there's some sort of way to control the negatives. How to, you know, there's nothing in the ordinance that makes it possible for coenforcement to really be able to say, they're cut, I can see you. This is not how it should happen. We have to have a triggering event for somebody to come out and make a violation. Once things have gotten to proportions that are not acceptable, is when we're gonna find out and the board wants to avoid that naturally. So um I, you know, I'm not sure what to recommend necessarily as as far as mechanisms. But I think there is uh perhaps sufficient testimony and maybe through comments uh by the by the public, we will hear more um of the sort of natural controls. Um the the assistance of Parks and Rec providing controls as far as scheduling, any issuing of permits. But um I I I do believe at least as part of the client's testimony, we've satisfied the positive and negative criteria.
What about? So let's start at the beginning, right? We're trying to find a good place for this. The two concerns that are jump off the page is the through traffic, number one, and the proximity. I mean, you're talking feet from where the drive aisle is. Um and in addition to that, no restroom facilities at all. No, no hard line phone, no way to call for an emergency, like from a planning perspective. What are those issues to you? And and what should they mean to us?
So so again, if if she weren't on the private property, those are concerns, right? She was doing all these activities as permitted by the borough in the park.
Yeah.
Uh the classes, the classes are short, so the idea of the restroom facilities is is little less intensively important, I think.
It's different. So so the one thing is, when you're gonna go to the borough and you're gonna say, I'm gonna use it on Friday, and the borough's got a schedule and they know who else is there, they're gonna eliminate the conflict. The minute you do it independent of them, you lose the ability to do that entirely. If she's getting permits to be off-site, it's covered to an extent, but it doesn't address parking.
Right, exactly, because she's relying on, she's got public facilities to accommodate conflicts with her overlap schedule.
But if you're in the park, the restroom facilities are at the park. To the extent that we're only within the fenced in area, there is no restroom facility that's readily accessible. And the distance that needs to be traveled requires somebody to go with a kid of this age that they would need to get over there. I'm not, look, I'm not trying to find a reason to not find a way to be okay with this.
So her mitigating factor is they're gonna go to their own car and use their squatting potties or they have diapers or and have changing facilities that are in their cars. And I think that's, that is a normal consideration for young, young kids in the outdoor environment. I mean, that's what we're talking about too. This is an outdoor facility. It's not um you know, it's not a classroom, it's not a building, it's not.
The, right, but as you lay classes in, it changes, right? If we're doing two a day and they're spread out and they're forty-five minutes apiece, it's one thing. If if an approval from the board without restraints means you can do eight hours a day, five hours, five, five days a week, or or six, or whatever, it it changes.
And again, we don't have anything in the ordinance that says they need to provide rest facilities. There's nothing, even if she were doing it on the in the park, that she provide rest, rest facilities.
Because it's not permitted huge. We don't define by our ordinance, but.
Exactly, exactly. So the mitigating factor is, is enough that she, you know, parents use their cars or whatever. Um I, as a point of consideration, I you know, even even like a conditional use, when we do um you know, the church itself is conditional use, right? We don't have a condition that says we need to make sure there's sufficient rest facilities. So I.
Well, that's built in.
I I think it's, well, they rely on the building code.
Yeah.
For that. There is no corresponding code.
Is, you have two types of classes. You have the classes with the adults there, the the caregivers. So if a child has to go to the bathroom, he can be, he or she can be accompanied by the parent or the guardian.
Yep.
So there's there's not an issue there. The other classes are the drop-off, where there are a very few number, relatively few number of children and three instructors, instructors. So one of those children has to go to the bathroom. Again, an instructor can take that child and you still have two instructors on the site supervising.
Yeah, but I think the concern is where are they taking them?
They're into the church, I would think.
Well, they're not allowed in the church. Only she's allowed in the church. Only the operator has been given permission.
Well, what what we know is we don't know what's in the lease. It would certainly make sense that they had access, but we've heard no testimony that they had access. And the public restrooms at Fairhaven Fields are locked sometimes. They're not always.
So while the squatting potty may work for those that are would have the caregivers there for the four to eight. I think in the sense that they need to use the locker or something.
As a non child having, I have dogs, that you know, I'm only tangentially aware of other options for, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo, um you've got some engineering analysis with regard to where we are. Where are the holes from your side that we need to cover while we're figuring this out?
Things that remain um kind of touched on it, but the the whole drop-off and pickup operation, how that takes place, especially if someone's not parking a vehicle. I guess frequency, location, safety of that. Um the sign we kind of touched on, but I think we would need to make sure that we actually formally get a sign permit.
Actually, um I did, oh, sorry, Donna Miller, I I I, there is a section of the ordinance that says um schools, churches, hospitals, or similar institutions, clubs and lodges are permitted a sign of thirty-five square feet total area.
We haven't been asked to approve this one.
I'm just suggesting that there may be a provision in the ordinance that commits the sign and it appears to be similarly sized to what would be permitted.
We're not being asked to approve a sign.
Can we amend the, we'd like to amend the application to.
What's the data on the sign? Have a visit. No.
Similarity for the fences, for the fences uh are exempt from the permitting process. That's thirty-seven point two five A.
What's your?
Thirty-seven point two five A permits decorative fences used around gardens, et cetera. Um are exempt from the.
Uh it it it's certainly designed to keep the kids in.
Okay.
Um and and frankly, we haven't been asked to okay the fence. I I mean, I I understood you to be asking for an approval with regard to the use. And and my assumption at the beginning was that you're gonna go to the borough with regard to that. The fence isn't a big deal, okay? It's not a big deal because you're inside of the property, you're not in front yards, side yards. But you gotta work that out with zone. It it only makes sense, obviously, with the fence. I I don't understand the purpose of the signs. Obviously, nice to have a sign, but there are standards for signs. Um and and we're not, we haven't been asked to approve a sign.
Fine. I do have uh something to add. Um the uh pastor of the church is actually here tonight and I had an opportunity to speak with him. We can make a condition of any approval that I provide a copy of the lease.
Oh, that that already is in.
That will uh include the the right of the applicant to use the bathrooms.
For all of her students?
For her students, yeah.
So so I I'm gonna make a suggestion. The the playground for Meadowflower has a pathway to the building that is distinct. It is, it is rigidly followed by the teachers. The kids are holding hands, they're all moving. There should be an access walkway that people become aware of that is designed to take the kids to the church if that's where they're going, to the bathroom. I think it's an improvement, but I think that comes with sort of a a a structure to it. And obviously, that would be better than not. Uh Mr. Rizzo, do you have a question with regard to drop-off and and whatnot? And Mr. Rosati, what can you offer, Mr. Rizzo, by way of his questions?
And is a pick-up and drop-off work for the the older students?
We have Emily come back in.
I guess where is the gate or gates to the fence? How long do cars sit there for? Do they, the parents usually park in the parking lot, wait for their stu- their their child, or do they leave it back?
For the drop-off classes. Um some parents will wait. Uh the drop-off class are all after school hours and the parking lot is empty. Um and about half, more than half parents will drop off and leave for drop-off. The they walk the child to the gate, there's a teacher waiting at the gate to let them in, and at dismissal, they are called one by one when you see their caregiver.
Do you see a I guess, a large number of cars all parked at the same time along the the drive aisle next to the gate trying to drop off at the same time?
Yeah, we, because there's only ten to twelve students in the drop-off class and there's forty parking spaces, so there's always plenty of space.
Do the parents always park and bring the kids to the gate, or do they literally drop off their kids?
The, they get out of the car, walk with their child to the gate, a teacher greets them, and then they come in.
So I think we can maybe recommend a condition, um a sign along the lines of no uh no drop-off in the drive aisle, just for safety reasons, um to ensure that everyone parks their vehicle. And you know, gets out of the vehicle and safe way.
And that's what currently.
Do you have a sign there or?
There's not a sign, but that's what the parents do.
Where would that sign go?
So you have um not fifteen foot. not a fifteen-foot drive aisle. I'd say just, you know, next to the speed bumps.
Where did the directional arrows come from that are on the sightline? Do they exist?
With the parking lot?
They're not observed. The, the problem is, there's not a single person that would drive up and around and then take the right onto the driveway to exit at McCarter. What I do, and I assume most people do, is if there's no cars, they're driving straight through the parking spaces. And if there are cars, they're actually coming straight to you, and then they're coming against that arrow, and then they're taking a left. We need to be thoughtful about what we're talking about because it can get out of control. In terms of what you're trying to do, you just need to think that you're, even the, even the crosswalk that I'm talking about isn't easy as I look at it. It, it's gotta be thought about. And, and while access to the bathroom, I think is good, I, I think it's good for everyone. If, if, if it's not practical, then we're just talking. Um, and I don't think that's to anybody's benefit.
So there's always an adult with a child, so it's, you know, like any other parking lot where you have to watch the child for, you know, you go to a Target parking lot or the Acme parking lot is crazy, right? And you have to watch your child and you have to walk through cars, cars are coming through to go to dunk donuts or whatnot, so it's like any other.
And Meadowflower's different, cause they empty out and they're doing twenty, thirty, forty kids. There's limited teachers, and so as a result, they're all connected and they're all in a very specific place. And what you're identifying is a difference in the way that you do it. You're putting an instructor with a child and they're gonna do it differently than a class emptying from the back.
As far as getting to the bathroom is concerned.
And with regard to a sign as to drop off. It, it doesn't matter. If a sign that says don't drop through or everybody ignores it, there are parking spaces there. So if they're filled, it, it's, it's a road effectively at times. So, you know, we shouldn't just suggest a sign because it feels good to suggest a sign. If, if there's, if there's an issue with how it works, we should be thinking about whether or not there's a way to make it better and safer. But I don't think the sign does it.
Can it not be a condition that she can't have rolling drop-off?
I, 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 I think that to the extent that we're gonna try and create some parameters around what we understand this to be and the, the basis on which we're granting an approval, I think we should. I think there's a lot of stuff that we talked about, and I think that we need to be mindful of putting constraints on this that are unnecessary. I think, I think, I still didn't get an answer that I'd like, but I think that controlling the negatives, I think, is what Donna said, is, is kind of the, the, the broad-reaching thing that we're trying to do. But what we're really doing is you're shooting the gaps, right? You're finding the times when it works and you're there at times when it doesn't disrupt. And the question is how to regulate that? Look, an approval runs with your business. So, everybody in town has come to know you through this process, but you can sell, right? There can be other operators, and whatever we do and whatever we write down needs to control not only you and this operation, but any future user and their ability to do it. A, a, and that's, and that's complicated when kids are involved. And I, I think all the discussion has been really good and you explaining to us how it works. And I think the issue is trying to figure out how to craft a structure to this that we can make sure that that's what it always is. And, and I don't, I don't have all the answers for myself to figure that out at this moment. I know we need to hear from, from all the, from all the friends and, and residents that are here. Um, but I, I, I'm not quite sure how we do that to them. Unless maybe this research idea of some of these.
Well, I can't design a sight plan of parent, of course. Um, but one thing that I've done with many boards in the past is, uh, during compliance review, we could provide certain detail to the satisfaction of the board's engineer. And two engineers work things out, and I'm sure you've done that before as well. So if the board were inclined to take action, favorable action this evening, um, surely that could be, um, a condition of approval that as to, let's say, drop-off and as to a path between the fenced-in area and the existing, well, I'm looking at the existing pathway and maybe tying into that or coming up with some other solution to get from the fenced-in area to the, to the church building. Um, but these could be conditions of approval that we satisfy the board's engineer, uh, in those respects.
Is there, is there a reason it wasn't built closer to the church to begin with?
Sticks and sprouts?
Yeah, I mean, it would seem to me unless, I know I can't see if there's anything on here, right? But if you were to move this to the short side of the parking lot, and I'm not suggesting you do it, but I'm, that would alleviate a lot.
That's where Meadowflower's playground is.
Okay, alright, understood.
There is maybe one in sixty children who use the bathroom during, like, right? If we're running three classes of twenty kids, there's maybe one in sixty that goes to use the restroom. It's only a forty-five-minute class.
I'm not sure, given that it's one instructor taking a child with that, and that we really need a specific path.
As they say, it's a parking lot. You take, you get in the parking. I mean, if, if you, I mean, it might be simple as putting cones out, you know, and, and I think.
I can't go and blocking the first spot, right? The first two spots, there's never any cars there anyway, but I can.
So there's two spots then are shown on here.
Which, it, the, which, which spots are you referring to?
Uh, right at my front gate.
I, I, I don't see where the front gate is.
Uh, it's, uh, the corner further from Meadowflower, closest to the parking lot.
So the, so the triangle across hatch area, you, you, you block off those two spots?
Other end.
So you see where the sheds are?
Yeah.
Um, so there's not even, I'm sorry, there's not a spot there, but you see how there's room in the parking lot? There's like a tree that, there's like branches, so you can't even really park there, but I put cones there just in case.
For what?
Because that's the front gate. So if there was a car there, it would just like, would block the entrance. It's just like an empty corner of the.
So it's not a striped parking space, but it's an area that you might foresee someone trying to park?
Yes.
Right?
So the best of my memory, there's not a white line there.
And, and you don't do any rolling drop-offs, so there's no need to have a place where a car can stop, a door can open, and a kid can safely exit the vehicle and get to your fence? That, that doesn't exist? Okay, they're coming into a parking space.
They're parking in a parking space, coming out and walking to the gate.
So, Mr. Rizzo, with regard to the drop-off stuff, does that, does that satisfy your concerns about drop-offs?
It, it doesn't, because my concern is more so safety, and, uh, you can probably only the two cars uh, through that drive aisle, uh, pretty tight. And, um, if there's one dropping off in one direction and one in the other, now the whole thing's blocked off. There's, you know, need for any emergency vehicles to go by, that creates an issue.
No, everyone, no one drops off like that. Everyone parks in a parking spot.
Yeah, that's what I want to understand. If everybody's parking in a parking spot and a parent is taking the child to the fence. That doesn't alleviate the drop-off concern?
That, that does, so long as that's, that's followed.
Okay, so to the extent that that's the way it works, to the extent that that's not an interruption to the way they can functionate, then we can simply condition that specifically in the resolution as to the way the kids get from a car to your fence. What, what would you wanna do with regard to the bathroom? So, we, we've thrown it over a little bit, getting access is great. Would you want to try to create a crosswalk and something else? Or do you think that having a, uh, an instructor with a child is, is adequate to get them from A to B?
So for the past two years, it's been adequate and, and very safe. If to get past, I need a crosswalk, I'll do it, but I don't, I, I care about the children immensely. One of my number one things to, and I don't see it concerning.
I think the broader issue is whether or not you're there at a time when other people are there for other reasons. To the extent that you're shooting the gap and you're there when no one else is there, I can see it working. And, and to me, that's what I'm much more concerned about, is making sure that when you're there and operating, that you're not conflicting with other users. And what I'm specifically focused on is drop-off for Meadowflower, pickup for Meadowflower. They have special events at Meadowflower, they run a parade through here on the Cape, and I know you wouldn't, but in order to put into a resolution that came with regard to other sporting events and things at the field, church events. To me, i- if we're only in these limited windows where there's a limited use of a parking, you're, 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 your inadequate parking becomes less of an issue, and your ability to get a kid from A to B becomes less of an issue. But I'm still not understanding how we're gonna tie that up to that.
Yeah, you know, and Meadowflower isn't here right now to tell us what their schedule is gonna be, and I believe that varies a little bit. Um, so you wanted to say something.
Can you position it on her monthly meeting with the other users of the parking lot and that? And then share, so there's no complications? Yeah.
Is it in the church or is it Meadowflower? There's a church, right?
Yeah, Mr. Sadi, the lease is held by, or the lease is with the church or with the school?
With the church. So why don't we do this, okay? Why don't we, if, if you'd like to present testimony from the, the pastor that you say? Um, and then why don't we hear from the public? Um, and then, and then why don't you take a little time to listen and, and maybe? And, and then we'll.
Sure, I do have a few more things, but.
No, 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 let, let's do it now, please.
Talked about lighting a little bit. I kinda got the impression that classes would only be during the day hours, so.
I can get rid of that necklace.
Say, you have a record in the study of the system, why, why more lights?
No necklace.
So, are, are we gonna specify operating hours then? Like at least the beginning and?
Like the daylight?
Just sundown? Just like the park?
There's gonna be a lot to piece together, okay? And so, I, I, I agree that removing any idea of having kids here at dusk or dork creates a, a greater sense of comfort that kids moving from A to B won't become a danger.
Uh, quick one is being that your testimony is at the dwelling here is the pastor's house. You don't see any need to buffer that residential use from your operation. Is there any buffer there now, or do you think that needs to increase it?
Um, the pastor's here, I don't think we bother them, but.
Where are trees between?
There's trees and they have a large backyard. The decent out back of the house.
Do you have any ADA parties?
Uh, there are one or two spots in that.
Uh, do you agree to bring it into compliance? You need two spaces for, for the total.
I'd have to ask the church.
I mean, it's, it's a.
The church needs.
Needs to meet, it's a national requirement, so.
Uh, yeah, this, this, this site has been reviewed at least three times. So, um, if it, I'm sure that same question was asked in previous editions of this and.
How would you be sure, counsel?
Well, yeah.
Well, well, ho- hold on, Mr. Rizzo. Are you suggesting that the board doesn't have discretion to say that the use of a parking lot as it's currently striped and configured with regard to handicap spaces i- is not within our purview? Are you saying it's required from, on high to us?
Well, this is a sightline application, and, um, you know, it's an ADA requirement to provide handicap spaces. So this is the opportunity to make sure that a possible non-compliant site is brought into compliance with that standard.
Thus, is that compliant for this use or for any use?
It's based on a number of parking spaces, not by the, the use or anything like that.
But then wouldn't it fall under the church and not sticks and sprouts to make that accommodation?
Well, they are using the site, they're using the parking spaces.
How many handicap spaces are required in a twenty?
There's, I think there's two. Can I ask?
Well, not if I don't have a person under oath. If, if you wanna bring the person, if you wanna bring that person forward, put them under oath. Let's skip through any more questions for every person.
Um, you agree to all the performance standards, the ordinance, as far as noise, uh?
Yes, it doesn't really apply here, but yes.
And then are there any outside agencies or are you sure we're just calling this?
Other than those that you discussed in the earlier part? No, the testimony was that none is required.
Yeah, so nothing else.
Nothing else.
Yeah, good, thank you. You, you, you had said that you tested the soil kind of in another discussion. You tested the soil because you wanted to test the soil and you know that for daycare facilities, that's done. You didn't do that because any, of any outside obligation.
Correct. I just wanted to mention.
Tested it for contaminants?
It's clean.
Can that be added to the record? Yeah, but the test, I mean, the results of the test, I mean, we're, we're asking for other things that are.
So licensing.
Not gonna be done, that, that we don't have in hand today. I'm just asking.
Do, do you have that paper still?
Uh, it's probably in my email.
Okay. You're good? Okay, so, um, Mr. Sadi, I'd like to.
Was the reason you were asking for the buffer was because there's residents?
Correct.
And this is, this is a commercial state, is there any concern that to the extent that that hasn't been done with the nursery or any of it? Or is it just one, we just need to find because there's?
I just wanna ensure that this use for you to, for the board tonight, uh, provides adequate buffer to any use around it that would need.
Residential use.
In this case, it was residential use on the plan. I'm sure we'll have to hear testimony that, you know, no additional buffer uh, is needed, or where that is needed and make that a condition.
Okay, I just wanted to understand why you're asking.
That dwelling is church property as well, Adam.
All right, Mr. Sadi, did you wanna put the pastor on? I, I, I think it would only be brief if, uh, we do that now, would you please come on?
I'm calling David Schumacher.
State your names, follow your last name, please.
David Schumacher, S-C-H-U-M-A-C-H-E-R.
Mr. Schumacher, how are you associated with this property?
I'm the pastor for Christ Church.
Okay, and, uh, as the pastor for the church, are you also, uh, authorized and do you bound to manage the facility as it relates to tenants and other matters?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and do, are you familiar with this dwelling that is, that I'm pointing to on the survey? And it's labeled dwelling over here near McCarter Avenue?
Yeah, it's my home.
That's your home, and, uh, that's where you reside?
Yes.
And are you familiar with, uh, the Sticks and Sprouts operation?
Yes.
And have, has that affected you in, in your residential activities at dwelling in any way?
No, no, in fact, it's actually made it more enjoyable to look out the back window.
And what is in between, is there any plants or other buffering in between the dwelling and, and, uh, Sticks and Sprouts area here?
Yeah, there's some natural growth in between us, um, and a couple of the trees.
Um, do you feel that it is necessary to increase the amount of buffering that's already there?
No.
Okay. And I'll, I'll just ask a quick question about the church bathroom. Um, in, earlier in this hearing, I, I came up and represented to the board that I spoke with you and that, um, you confirmed that the lease could be modified so that, uh, Sticks and Sprouts would have the right to bring a child into, uh, the church to use the bathroom if, uh, need rose?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly been that, yeah.
Um, I don't have any other questions for Mr. Schumacher.
What about, are you aware of how many handicap parking spaces there are in your parking lot?
My best recollection, I think there's only one, so obviously we'll take the recommendation to make sure that they're worked out.
Um, just keep in mind that, um, within ADA space, you need an access aisle next to it. So we wanna make sure that we don't eliminate another space to provide strike access.
Yeah, so we're, we're really opening a can of worms there. I, I think that we need to discuss it. I, I think that we can accept the representation that to the extent necessary, that the spaces be accommodated. Did I, did I misspeak?
No, I don't think.
So let, so let us, let us.
The lease, that we've discussed.
Yes.
What's the lease term?
Uh, it's actually, it's an annual lease.
Okay, annually renew. Wh-what does the lease involve in terms of this applicant's use of the property at present? I know you, I know you said in the future, no problem using that towards the, but what do they have in operation of yourself, given what's the lease, to your recollection, if you do, if not, expensive?
They have access to that portion of the property, uh, the returned property. Um, and to the use of, that's already defined by the school, it's, you know, by the program itself.
Okay, does the lease include the use of the shed?
Yes, it does.
Okay, does it, and the use of the park?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and, and we hadn't talked about it, but I, I, I would assume that what we're talking about is this particular user, this particular location for so long as they have the right to use this property pursuant to a lease agreement. Such that to the extent that this lease agreement will expire, that there would be a cessation of this use.
That's, that is correct.
So much a comment for you, but more that I'm trying to put some guardrails around what we're talking about so as to not accidentally create an opening for something different. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, thanks.
All right, so at this time, I'm going to invite, um, anyone that has any comments or questions with regard to the Sticks and Sprouts application to step forward. Um, we've got a chair for you there. We're going to ask you to speak your name, give your address, and, uh, Mr. Kobatz is going to swear you in. So you can either move up one by one. There you go.
It's not going to be many of us. Consolidate it with them over.
Oh, okay.
To save you time.
Also, may I ask you to, you saw me swear the testimony, you could, the whole truth. And could you spell your last name first?
A N T T O N E N.
Thank you.
Um, I'm a lifelong resident happily and, um, the mother of a three-year-old and a one-year-old. Semi-happily sometimes. Um, I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of Emily Q. In Sticks and Sprouts, the wonderful business she has created here at Fairhaven. Sticks and Sprouts, as you learn tonight, provides a unique exploratory outdoor play environment for all kids, rain, shine, snow. Emily has designed the area to cater to the imagination of every child that attends. She builds, engages, she plays, she reads, she sings, she dances, she does it all. She pours one hundred percent of her attention and heart into her job every single class. By the time passes over, your child has likely offered you a bowl of mud soup from the state-of-the-art outdoor kitchen which you always politely decline. They have spent one full hour safely creating and playing outside in the fresh air, insulated away from main roads, interacting with kids of all ages, thanks to Emily. We are all attending tonight because it is incumbent upon residents to rally behind our small businesses to create a supportive environment that fosters their growth and resilience, especially one that benefits our children. By granting this rezoning request, we're not just opening the door to economic expansion right here in our town. We're investing in our future and preserving the magic that makes Fairhaven truly special. And that magic is that we are an outdoor-oriented community. Our kids independently walk and hike to school from a very young age safely. Fifty years ago, we protected seventy-seven acres of coveted green space within our one point seven square mile of town. We're surrounded by walking paths, baseball diamonds, a bird sanctuary, waterways. It is within the DNA of Fairhaven to be outside, to play outside and to utilize the spaces that were so thoughtfully protected for us. And that is what she does. She brings kids into these forests. She takes them out of their comfort zones and she lets them play in the mud. There is no better fitting partnership than the one that can be between Fairhaven and Sticks and Sprouts. Emily belongs here. So I ask you to support the rezoning with Sticks and Sprouts and enable Emily to stay and thrive in Fairhaven. Thank you.
My name is Al Zager.
You saw me swear the testimony, give for the board the truth.
Welcome. I live at fifty-five Mon Carter Avenue, two houses away from Sticks and Sprouts. I've lived at that address for over forty years. My son grew up here, went to schools here, and one of them lives in Fairhaven, on the other side of town. And I've seen that property for those forty years. I've seen the effort, the whole, uh, I have a garden here. It didn't work because the ground is so wet, the stuff wouldn't grow. It was unsightly and that site, um, just was not used in any way that's beneficial. When Sticks and Sprouts started, uh, and I, I should mention that I'm one of those people like uh, Mr. Letter that drives through there very frequently, virtually every day I drive through there. And I see the school, the Sticks and Sprouts operation. From the very beginning, I've been amazed at what I see there. Uh, not only are the kids playing mud, we play in that mud every single season of the year. Summer, fall, winter, spring, the kids are playing outdoors, something that's very needed in our society. When Emily, uh, told me that, uh, she was, uh, in need of coming here to the board, uh, frankly, I was extremely disappointed, if not shocked, because I don't see her use uh, as anything but beneficial, not only to Fairhaven, but to my particular neighborhood. And you know, as board members, that normally neighbors come to object to applications and say that it will be detrimental, which you proved was being asked for. I'm telling here today to tell you that it would not only be not detrimental, it would be extremely beneficial. This property is next to the town park. That park is very well-used by walkers, like, uh, soccer players, cross players, I think. Uh, baseball, of course, the playground, um. That public use is wonderful. And when sometimes people complain on my street that like, the, the people using the park, park on our street, block the traffic a little bit, I say that's why I live in Fairhaven, it's such a wonderful place with these outdoor recreational opportunities. Sticks and Sprouts is extremely, um, comparable to the public park that's right next to our and to the, um, Meadowflower Playground that's just on the other side of the park. Uh, as I said, I go through there virtually every day. There's never a parking problem. Never. And, um, I understand the board's concern about these technical issues. I practice law for forty years. Zoning law, I've been before your board, many other boards in Monmouth County. I tell you, there is not a parking problem. The fact that Sticks and Sprouts leases that section of the property from the church, the church as the landlord has control over the use. If the church was lucky enough to have overwhelming use of the church as a church, my guess would be that maybe the church would have to say, Sticks and Sprouts, we can't renew the lease because we need the parking for the church. That's not the case, then it's probably not going to be the case in our foreseeable lifetime. The church will operate mostly on Sundays, Sticks and Sprouts operates at other times of, of the week. So it just, there isn't a conflict. And I've seen that there isn't a conflict. I would be extremely disappointed if you don't approve this application. Thank you.
Mr. Saudi from Zager Peaks, would you like to, uh, cross-examine, Mr. Zager?
Great question, but I'll rest.
Anyone else? No one else? No, we're not.
Intimidating guys, okay.
No, we're not.
You saw me swear the testimony, give for the board to be the truth, or hold for talking about the truth.
Yes, sir.
Can you spell your last name first, please?
Nash, N A T N A N C E, A S H. First name Christina and I live at eleven Linden Drive.
Thank you very much.
Um, first of all, thank you so much for all of your time and giving us the opportunity to speak and support a business that we believe in. Um, as many of us were, I was taking notes and, and, um, trying to follow everything that was being said and, and asked of our local business owner while I was sitting back there, but, um, a lot of it has been covered, but I just, I just wanted to make sure that I pointed out as a local parent, a Meadowflower parent, and a Sticks and Sprouts parent, and my husband is the, um, scouts leader for the, the local scouts group. That it, I, I mean no disrespect, but you, you have to realize that, um, the, the team of people here, not including the parents, have done so much work in preparation and, um, to say they've had all their ducks in a row in preparation for these meetings is, is, um, minimizing what they've done, but I, it, I feel like many of you up here are not really that familiar with what the business is to begin with and how it is different from other businesses or schools in town. Um, so I just wanted to point out, as they mentioned and, and touched on the natural play space, um, my son first went to a child's place in Lynncroft, which is roughly sixty to seventy percent higher in tuition than Meadowflower and their entire business model is based around their natural play, period. Um, it's one of the biggest curriculums used in the United States trying to mimic the Scandinavian countries. Um, and I can point specifically to the Scandinavian school based in Jersey City that has gotten national attention for their natural play, that means outside every day, no matter the weather, um, not lots of blinky colorful plastic toy. It's playing in nature and using mud. And that's what Emily's business model does and it's incredibly beneficial. One would just need to, to Google that to read more. I, I'm not qualified to speak on, on curriculum. Um, but I did just want to point out that, that the benefits of natural play and what she is doing is completely different than anything else offered in town and un-until a new director at a child's place, that was what parents in town were going there to seek out. Um, also, as a Meadowflower parent, parking has never, ever been a problem because one thing that hasn't been touched on is that there is a lot of overlap. I am a Meadowflower parent and also a Sticks and Sprouts parent. Also, I, I do walk there most of the time, as do a lot of people, but I have been a Meadowflower parent for three years and, uh, Sticks and Sprouts parent for two years and I, I have never once had an issue with either parking situations. I, I didn't quite realize that that was the main topic, um, that would be addressed tonight, but, um, I, I've I felt like I wanted to point out, um, as you guys were referencing the parking at Meadowflower many years ago, um, it's just, it, it's not how it was many years ago. In fact, I don't know that any of you realize that they have had a professional come in and repaint all the lines within the last twelve months. So the parking lot is not what it was when your kids may have gone there. Um, and so I just feel like with all the preparation that the Sticks and Sprouts team has done, it's clear that, that you guys haven't seen the classes in action or gone through the parking lot. You would only have to do it once to see like, oh, this, this actually works and it's fine. And I don't know if the USA sports groups or the music classes or the other groups that meet in Fairhaven Fields have to to get the same approvals, but I was kind of surprised with the main thing we were discussing was parking spots and bathrooms. Again, my kid goes there and loves it. She's five years old, um. She can hold it. She's there for an hour. It's not, it's not a big deal. I mean, I haven't parked at the bathroom yet since I've been here. And that's not even a topic about Mon Carter Park, um, across the street from Sybil School. Um, obviously the kids go there from Sybil School for recess, but I think we can all agree that there's dozens of children there after school hours when the school is locked to the public and there's no bathroom there, but I mean, again, I tell the kids to hold it, like, you know, it's fine, or go home. It, it's not, it's, it's not a big deal. Um, but it's, I, I think, you know, I, I didn't want to get into the emotional, um, you know, my kid is so happy here and, and I I started to hear some of that from you guys and, and asking her about her business model for it to succeed her after she's long gone. That's not what we're here to discuss tonight, as, as far as I know. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Um, as a parent that's now quite invested in this, are, are we here just specifically to, to, um, figure out the details around parking and bathrooms, or is there something else? And just what can we do to make it right? But I, I would just very politely point out that there's been a lot of preparation done to prepare for all of your questions and your pushback. But it doesn't seem like many of you have gone through Meadowflower recently, um. I, I have confirmed quite quickly with teachers there that it is four classrooms and one office. There's usually about six cars for Meadowflower staff there. Unfortunately, the director of that school couldn't be here to speak on Emily's behalf, which she would have, and I'm not claiming to speak for her. Um, but some of the questions that you guys had seem to be things that you probably could have found out ahead of this meeting. And I would just like to point out that professionalism of the Sticks and Sprouts team has very well-prepared for all of your questions. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, that directed button. Mr. Saudi, it's quarter eleven. We will do.
Well, we have no further witnesses. Um, there's no public comp, no one public comment and we have agreed on a number of conditions. So I think board deliberation would come next.
So we're going to, um, we'll close. But before we close, and allow the board to deliberate alone without further involvement, interjection, tell me what those conditions are that you understand to be on the table and you understand to be accepting to them.
Conditions. All drop-off must be originated from a parking space. No night classes. Night meeting, so after dawn. Thus, dawn, dusk, dusk.
Eventually it gets after dawn.
After dusk.
Okay, with Neil.
Couple of hours.
Uh, we'll provide a copy of the lease with the church, which does provide bathroom access. The site will be rendered ADA compliant.
Parking space will be compliant?
Parking space.
Parking.
Parking.
Because you want to do the whole thing.
Meaning one more handicap parking space would be added. I don't know where we landed with the pathway. Um, I, we were agreeable to it, but I don't know that the board is going to actually require it. It was discussed, considered, um, so we would submit, uh, the idea of not requiring a further crosswalk. You heard testimony concerning, um, trips to the bathroom are very sparing and when they do occur, it's supervised with an adult and very, very safe. Um, so we would, uh, submit without, um, a pathway, um, from a fenced-in area to the church. No classes would take place while, uh, church services are going on. Now, as far as, you, you heard some testimony from, um, members of the public who, uh, live this every day. And it doesn't sound like, um, there is a, any kind of dangerous situation that occurs, uh, between Meadowflower and Sticks and Sprouts and, and when, uh, I, I guess at some points in some mornings, drop-offs might be taking place at the same time, but it sounds like that is okay. Um, so I wouldn't want to restrict when she can have her classes because that would really, really negatively impact.
Just that portion as to what your thoughts when you agree to.
Just that portion as to what your plans when you agree to conditions, there may still be more from the board.
I understand, uh but I'm just addressing some of them that was discussed, but we're not submitting. We're not proposing, okay, and I'm giving you a reason why. I believe that's all the conditions that you've reached.
Provide dimensions for the specific area.
Dimensions for the specific area, of course.
That that's very important because um. Any expansion on that would theoretically require you to back.
Um, and all the other um details, submission details that your engineer recommended on the record, we will also comply with that.
We also agree to um have a thirty minute overlap or gap between.
Between Sticks and Sprouts classes.
Well, yeah, between there.
Okay, we're good.
And and Mr. Collette, Mr. Chair, um. The parking is a design waiver, so that's why we've, you know, discussed it in length, um I think you can understand how many parking spaces are there and how that's going to function. But the waiver is from how many spaces are required, um which we haven't exactly figured out tonight.
I'm probably going to recommend that the board make a sufficient condition that we get specific counts. From council, but you have an opportunity to use you.
I would agree.
So we understand what's there now and what we're giving the lease for.
And then now we've worked into the resolution, uh resolution.
Nah, I'm just saying, yeah. That's going to be worked into the.
That would be fantastic.
And that that would be counts, that would be counts for.
This would be prior to adoption of resolutions.
Each one of the uses, each one of the uses of the calculation, so we can then see what relief we're granting. Because we're putting a lock in that apartment, so you need those counts and unlike perhaps what people say, that's your obligation to do that. So you probably would recommend. That specific counts, each one of the uses there be given so that you know what we need for granting. Because even if in theory there's not a problem right now, at least on paper, you documented that this has been needed granted. So that in the future, when someone as stellar as perhaps this candidate or an applicant is not going to be operating that. But if that lease gets renewed from another candidate. But that's going to be still be binding. This this is somewhat tricky because this is a lease for this area, but we're now going to be saying. This area has been recognized and approved for this use in this area.
Good question, so unlike some other applicants who own a building, because this is a lease, it's different, but we would condition this for this. Specific person only like we have on our conditions.
I I I'm gonna have to do some research on that, I mean, at this point in time, if if there, because I haven't seen the lease, I don't know if you can. When I said, start a tenant or put somebody else out.
Right.
And I would be concerned about that, which is why we're trying to put these boards and respond there that if it is offered. But I I will certainly put that in, certainly not have a problem, I don't want to render an opinion as to what happens. We've done similar things with regard to other applicants that for so long as this use by this applicant.
Right, and when they cease to use it, then the 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 relief is is not in order. As you know, actually, it's just one point I want to make, and we all know that the business is great business, but we, am I deliberating this? We're trying to adjudicate the site and the site supporting, really is is.
That's written, well, it's it's, that's what you're doing with regard to the D variance, remember, again, the D variance that you understand, so this will help you through all the conditions we need to liberate. The D variance, basically, in our zone, covering body and developing, you know, different zones upset. It may be because we didn't see these, we didn't understand the issues, but. Ours is, it's not specifically designated, I don't know how you designate this anyway, but if it's not specifically designated, it's not permitted. The reason this board exists for a non-permitted use. Think of it, when everybody suddenly switched from, you know, push in movies and suddenly had uh, you know, online or some other form. We didn't have those before, you know, we didn't have those in our, this is something new for us, can this site accommodate it? If there are issues in accommodating them, how can you address those so that that negative criteria? Will not negatively impact your ordinances, will not negatively burden, you know, this other uses amount. What do we need to do to make sure that this is compatible on a both whole basis, so if there are other things that you think should be conditions. I would ask you to do address those by way of deliberations, I don't think there's anything else that we discussed from the applicant at this point. Okay.
Okay. I'll I'll start the open team, obviously, it's it's. It's really going to cite support, what's going on, and um the. The overflow, the combination, the the meshing of the Meadowflower and the Sticks and Sprouts, I mean. Yeah, it's it's concerning only for those caregivers staying classes when there's twenty kids there, but. Is it really a problem? It works now, I don't know, if we're site-specific and this use and this use only, I don't have a problem with it, as long as the. Conditions that uh Monsieur Sani has agreed to, no throttle, okay, I don't think you need a special path to for the bathroom, I really don't, I think it's overkill. Um, it's one person with one kid going to the bathroom, of course, pardon, I very small part of that. Um, you know, no night classes are given and uh the the only problem I have is with the the schedule, as long as uh. And and I think the schedule has been kind of will, it's kind of a natural thing anyway, if there's a conflict. There'll be a conflict between uh Meadowflower and Sticks and Sprouts, it's not really an external conflict. And that'll sort itself out, so hey, we have classes, now you can get a class, okay, one, that's my take anyway. Also, there's a lot of extra parking in this area that is not shown as right, as Mr. Kinsel has. The gravel area here is huge, the driveway here is is used for parking, I've seen it used many times in the past. So there is additional parking if and when it becomes a song. Um, and I think the site can support.
Yeah, and I'd like to follow up on that, because um as I mentioned, I am in this area. At least three days a week, um I walk my dog through the fairytale fields, uh I. Saw Miss McQ years ago unloading her truck to go to the little area that she used to run this business out of. Um, it has definitely been a benefit to the community. Um, just seeing the kid, there's uh Miss Nash said there are people walking. Um, you know, past moms with babies and strollers and kids walking to uh this school, there has never been. An issue with parking, um the only issue I've ever come across is I can't park in my preferred spot. But there can only be this, which something, some days it's not, but um. You know, eh with all of the conditions that are on here, and I agree with Mr. Machesney, I don't necessarily think any. Dedicated lane is necessary, uh you seem very creative, if you made a nice sign that said. Pots crossing, be careful, or even if you could probably go to the police station and give pedestrian crossing sign and put in that area. Um, so, you know, with the beneficial nature of this, um. You know, I guess there were some concerns, but it's been working, um and, you know, I don't see a need. A reason that we should stand in the way of this thing continuing if they, you know. If we want to, some of the requirements that we have, so I, I I support it.
Obviously, any, as I said, I'm sorry to take my time back, um. Any approval would be conditioned on uh. You know, the things that were stated here before as well as, and now I just lost my train of thought.
You know, this is such a unique situation and it's such a tremendous public service to the town of Perry. And for that reason, you know, you you have to figure out a way to make this work, I I personally don't have a problem. With the site plans and all the uh other modifications that have been made, in my mind, though, this works because. Miss McQ makes it work and. I think the fail-safe mechanism in my mind also is the fact that this is a yearly lease. And the church is not about to have something going on on their property that they don't approve of and they don't. And and they don't agree with one hundred percent, and I think the fact that the pastor came here today and made some. Uh, some modifications in allowing uh people to use the uh the restroom. Uh, he's come forward and he said that this is something that that works for him and works for the community. And uh I applaud him for that, and if he's in favor of it and it's on his property, I think that really says it off a lot. And I think that 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 yearly lease is the fail-safe mechanism, particularly with finance. I'm very in favor of it.
I know, I was gonna say, it it would be definitely be limited to Sticks and Sprouts only and not getting, we're not granting a. Incession for this parcel of land to have, it it would have to be limited to only this business.
So, Dr. Law, are you suggesting that maybe there'd be restriction as to the length of the lease? That for some reason was the key word assigned longer term lease, would that give you some pause, I don't think we have the ability. I I think, I think uh Mr. Schumacher uh stated that this is a yearly lease. I think it's up to him to to clarify that.
I'll be, I would suggest that you wouldn't have the ability to force that to.
I don't think you would, right?
I think it would self-regulate though, you know, if he had a problem or if the church had a problem, they would win the lease. If they wanted to say, we'll give you a five-year lease if you're, you know, willing, fine, but again, it only pertains to his review's business and no other business.
And I, and that's why I think this is a fail-safe mechanism, not really, and I I think the church knows what it's doing. And I know, I think they know who's on their property and I think that they have to be in favor of it.
I I agree with you, Skip, um I think it's been, I think it's beneficial, obviously, I appreciate all the neighbors testifying in addition to the pastor. Um, and the discussion about the parking, and I forget, is this, these numbers that you are always looking for, are they? They're not our ordinances, aren't they a state requirement or is it no guideline?
So, for residents or for single-family dwellings, it's the state's RSIS, which is what you're probably hearing. This is your ordinance, because it's.
It is our, so when you say, you know, if it's a club or a. That's that's our ordinance, okay, so once we get those numbers specifically, we'll know exactly what we are granting a variance. For, but that's all, we just to get that specific number, but we do know that there are other, there's additional parking in the area that could.
That's certainly going to be covered, aren't that, that's something that ameliorates those issues, that's that balances out, if you will.
Right.
The fact that there's a lack, that we've heard some testimony of the gravel areas that aren't specific, but available for people to use and the fact that you can use.
Right, I also don't have an issue with um the bathroom and needing the crosswalk and I and I would err on the side of the fewer signs, the better. I don't, I prefer less signs around town if possible. So that's just, that's where I.
I mean, nothing that's been not said already, my daughter's gone to Sticks and Sprouts, not religiously, but it's a great thing for the community, I I don't think anyone here. Debates that, it's really wholesome and I think it's, you know, probably shouldn't have had to get to this point to get here, right? It would have been better if there was less friction, but I think overall it's a great thing and hopefully some of this other stuff can fit into place. I would more be in favor of some sort of more structured schedule to avoid some of this, but. I also don't want to infringe upon her ability to make money and have a successful business. And I think that it can be really difficult, and then there's the subject of enforcement, um so I'd be for it, you know, subject to what be uh discussed.
As I said, I think the schedule self-regulates between Meadowflower and then if it becomes a problem, Meadowflower, then we need to discuss everything to with them.
Yeah. But it's just point of a one-year lease, is the.
Yeah.
So I I think the way that that gets articulated is that the 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 use variance is specific to this particular leasehold interest for so long. This particular leasehold interest continues, whether that's a year or a five year or what have you. And also that it be specific to this particular user, there's nothing that we heard tonight that isn't specific to the way that Miss McQ runs this particular operation. And when that's the testimony, that has to be tied to what you're doing, there's two explicit things that I think are super important, first thing is the resolution needs to be very, very clear. That there is no granting of a any particular authority to operate this facility at this location. That's outside of our jurisdiction, but we looked at tonight is a site plan and it it I still find it absolutely remarkable. In 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 a country with so many regulations and a state that has so many regulations and all the rest, that there aren't regulations, but. I I I'm I'm taking the applicant and the applicant's counsel, if they were, they already that, the resolution should invite instead, it should be absolutely clear.
And that's the reason why too, so we, just hold on, with with regard to the borough, I I think you need to go through what these improvements are. Because I I think it's my understanding that there is not a permit called for an improvement, there is not a permit called with regard to the sign. Um, there's no data with regard to the sign, um I think that to the extent that you're looking at a site plan, you're looking at a loose site plan. Um, I I don't, the fence needs to be there, there needs to be a fence, but at the same time, I I don't know. Why there weren't permits and what they would do by way of inspection, but I would suggest to you that if a normal fence like this would be inspected, it should be. With regard to the the sign, to the extent that there's a right to have a sign here based on the ordinances. I don't know that you all are thinking about it, but I would suggest to you that you defer that to the ordinances and to the zoning officer and to the borough.
Um, but you can sure, you can sure, you can talk, but lies then should be found, that what exists is in form and is not making it work. Fence, sign.
So I I'm I'm not in a position to vote in favor of this application, although I'm strongly in favor of the use. And the reason is because, the reason this works is because we are shooting gaps and it's working because she's making it work. The the variance that it grant is is. Is in ways not moderated unless you build it into the resolution. And so, to the extent that this becomes a fifty-hour-a-week operation or a thirty-hour-a-week operation and those things change. I I I just, I I I think you're taking it on faith and 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 I support all of you supporting this. But I cannot support not having some brackets around how this is working. Um, and so that that troubles me, I think it's entirely possible to get there, but the applicant hasn't offered anything, I don't think that you need my vote. Um, this is, this is a D, you need five of seven, I will go last. Um, but a- along the lines of Mr. Forte's comment, you know, that that is, that is an issue for me. I am okay with with not having a strict path to get to the bathroom, but again, that's because I'm relying on on shooting the gaps here. Um, this parking lot does get busy, I I I I know this parking lot and and I recognize that it's working and I'm okay with that. I recognize that on balance, we want it to work, I'm okay with that, but um there are conflicts between things. And and I think that it it it's incumbent on me to to feel as though I can sleep at night knowing that those conflicts won't be created. By creating those constraints and I'm okay with everybody else feeling comfortable about that tonight, um but that's holding me back. Oh, and the parking spaces, just think about the parking spaces, because if the new ADA, it doesn't matter that it's been restripped, they just painted over the old stuff. If the parking requirements require two ADA spaces, with the aisles and the way they do it these days, they're probably ten feet, there's probably striped sections next to them. You may wind up with four spaces being taken up with two handicap spaces, um that is a practical matter, aren't really needed. So, I I'm okay with doing it, but just be mindful of what action may come with that.
But that's why I was asking about that, so is it our ordinances that are going to require that?
Well, the ADA goes back to federally, that's not specific to our ordinance.
Right, but if we're re, if.
And then she's saying how does that integrate into, integrate into what we're doing here.
They they can't seek a variance or waiver, should not find it yet, but but we also don't know where the ADA. Oh, they could be also by the church outside. It has to be located on a close.
The issue before was who had the responsibility, to the extent that the owner, in this instance, has consented to this application. They can be bound by the conditions that we present in this, because in a sense they've said, this applicant has my permission to go forward. And I will agree to be bound by those conditions. So that's how it works, and to the extent that if the existing parking lot is not being compliant.
So that was the question I had too, is it on the, is it on? Miss McQ to provide the, to do this, or is it the church's issue that they don't have to use the spaces?
It's it's going to be a compliance issue as to. It's, it's, it's going to be a compliance issue as to how they comply, who, who ends up funding it, who has to comply. That may be a turn, that may be a condition of the lease.
That's the owner and the lease season.
Gotcha.
It is going.
No, it is. He's saying the owner is gonna be forced to compel based on what they.
I, I don't know what's in their lease. It hasn't been provided. If, for instance, the lease said, you know, you're gonna have an obligation to bring these all permits up to, anything that you. Then, you know, that's gonna have to be worked out between the leaseholder and the landlord. Are you an alternate?
Yep.
You have comments?
Yep.
Right.
Um. I, I think that when you consider this, you have to. Take into account that this started as. One person and a small group on public land and grew to. You know, three times a day, three days a week. Three instructors, up to twenty-two children and up to twenty-two adults. And that you can't discount the possibility of that expanding to five days a week more classes a day. Doesn't make sense to limit yourself if you're a businessperson, I don't think. So you gotta see that as. The potential for this use going forward. Um. Concerns me like it does Todd, the fact that it's totally unregulated. Um, just because it doesn't fall into a specific definition. As a school or as a daycare or as. Ret, whatever it is, it's, it's not, you know, there's no regulatory agency that. Has any purview over this.
Just as a comment to add color to that, in order to coach, they do a background check on it. I actually had to go to a class, right? It was three hours. I mean, there, there appears to be like that. That's not on us, so.
No, I know, but this, this is the one thing that. She commented that she had soil testing done. I'd love for the results of that to be part of.
The problem?
This record, that it, that it met some standard, that obviously she's chosen to continue to operate there based on the, the.
By, by putting that in the resolution, that would take it a condition, we'd say, well, we would only allow it because the soil's good. But I, and I don't, and it was an.
There's, there's, there's one and a half-year-olds there. If it was a, a preschool or a daycare, there would be a standard that they'd be held to, especially if they're playing in the mud.
There's the preschool doing, doing, is, are they required to do any soil tests?
You can't put a school.
Are they? So I, I, I towards up, I think does. I, I wanna just add with regard to me. It isn't a matter of her becoming successful and finding more kids that wanna benefit from this program. It isn't really a matter of how many classes. It's a matter of when those classes come in conflict with the other uses of this parking lot, the fields.
Right, but a lot of this is, we're saying that it works the way it works right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Great, approve the use based on that.
Right.
Or approve the parking based on that.
That's right.
That's not gonna be static.
Well, it, it might be.
That's, that's.
But, 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 but the, but the understanding of where we are in this moment, and you need five of seven affirmative votes in order to do this. Is that there isn't a proposal to try to restrict that in any way. Um, and that is fine, as long as five people are okay with that, it's fine.
I personally, as a use in that thing is gonna self-reg, and I say this again, self-regulate just due to the size of the property that we're talking about. And it can only accommodate so many kids. It's not like you can have fifty kids.
And we can only vote on what we have for that end of this.
It can only accommodate a certain number of kids. But part of why this works is because there's a gap between the, the, the classes. And because the classes start after general, I think she said nine or whatever, and metal flower starts at eight-thirty. So, you know, it, it starts after the, um. The daycare, when the school or whatever starts.
Yes.
You know, so it works right now. But if there's no. Consideration for when this starts, when it ends. I know we talked about the half-hour gap between the classes. Um, then, then you can grow that fifty people becomes a block throughout the day. And, and that's what you're, you're doing here is you, you're just dodging this throughout the day. And I, and I, I think you have to account for the fact that it may, it has the potential to expand to the point where you just can't dodge it.
But she also, and this is a, she also might decide she wants to move to California next year.
Right, and that's, and that's one. I'm just saying you have to consider the eventuality. We talk about our, our bulk variances and things like that. Uh, they ride with the land, not even the owner or the business that's there. We're saying this rides with the business that's there.
Yeah.
But within that, you have to account for the fact that that business that's there. Is not the same as the business that was there in twenty-twenty-one, when it was her and a couple of kids walking through the woods.
We don't have a crystal ball.
No, we don't. But you have to, you have to consider it. That's, that's what I'm saying.
The one thing you have control over is the size. And I know you're talking more so about frequency, but the size is, is gonna be locked in other dimensions.
We're only, like we said, that's obviously a condition. We haven't got the exact size.
So there's always so much mud in that area.
They use sunset. We know what sunset is, right? Can we use sunset instead of dust just to make it something quantifiable? That's all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Yeah, I, I would agree with everything the board members have deliberated on for the last four hours. You know, I, I think we have and always do do our homework. I think we always do and try to accommodate the applicant. I never think we're about putting up roadblocks or trying to slow any business down. Uh, for the application, I clearly see a room full of people that are very interested in the topic. Clearly, we have a couple of posters here of, of people smiling faces. So there's clearly a benefit.
That's right. I didn't, not much to add. I mean, I, I understand your point about, um, it'd be nice to kind of. Broke this in a little more with the, the timing, the classes and scheduling. But I think as Mr. Kovas said, it becomes an enforcement issue too. I just don't know how we, we do that. I'm not quite sure. Um, it's really gonna make a big difference. And I think as Mr. Machesy said, it's gonna probably self-regulate. There was an easy way to do it that made sense. I would, I would be open for it, but I don't really know how to do it.
Michelle, who are, who are our two alternatives? I, I was an alternative, who's the second? Okay, um. She's taking a straw pole in my head. Um, any further discussion? Nope. So let's go make a move.
I'll make a motion. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve, and this is, I'm gonna need you to.
But improve based upon conditions.
Improve based on the conditions that are agreed upon, um, and subject to, uh, confirmation of parking. Exact number of parking spaces. That's gonna be one of the conditions. As well as the exact dimensions of the area we're talking about.
I was telling you, you don't need to go through the law and stuff. Okay, I, I can if you'd like.
And no, 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 no. And, um, obviously limited only to this application.
Yes.
Only to this applicant. And with no need for a, a dedicated pathway to the bathroom.
Are you saying limited to this applicant?
Yes. Uh. Yeah, I'm good.
Second. Second.
Ridgeway, second. Yes.
Angela, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Flotan.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes. I'll upstairs. Congratulations, all of you. So what's gonna happen is we're kicking the collection, the third one today. Get three and dream already. Two, we're gonna wind up needing a special. Do we have the opportunity to put anything on? Just keep your ears open. We're gonna have to stay on top of schedule. Two nights a month. We're gonna be scheduling three, and we're gonna be pumping, it's gonna be best. The next six months are gonna be like, hey, got another stack that's coming in there? That's all. But I, I, that's gonna be, you got May sixteen, I think on the, meeting on the second, we discussed.
Mr. Chair, just one second.
We're gonna, we're gonna forward news, you don't worry.
Question, while we're still here, anybody knowing Mr. Ryan is not gonna be here on the second, is anybody else have a concern on May the second?
No.
Or the regular meeting in May second? I just wanna get a, a. Let's all try to be here.
Okay.
Susan, did you want to comment?